Good morning, everyone, and welcome back for day two of the February convening of the Kentucky Board of Education. I hope you had a good night's rest. We certainly had a vigorous day of discussion yesterday, so I'm glad to jump right back into the work, and I'll ask Dr. Brewer to please call the roll.
Joanne Adams.
Here.
Holly Ledward.
Here.
Patrice McQuerry.
Here.
Brady Tobe.
Here.
Sharon Robinson.
Here.
Lee Todd.
Here.
Amy Trumbull.
Here.
Lou Young. Here. And I just received notice from Ms. Holly that Logan is helping her access the Kames. She was ill yesterday and is feeling well enough to join us virtually today, so hopefully she'll be here any moment.
Joanna Stevens.
Here.
Jude Dolan.
Here.
Amanda Ellis.
Here.
Carrie Duhon.
Excellent. Thank you so much. At this time, we'll turn our attention to good news items, and several board members have items to share this morning. I'll turn it over to Dr. Poe.
Great. It's such a pleasure to make this announcement today to our Associate Commissioner, Kelly Foster. We see the Bob Harmon Service Award to Education at the ESEA Conference. She is an outstanding person that we know here that works with us. So it's an award for the National Association of Elementary and Secondary Education Act State Program Administrators. The conference was held February 1 through 4 in Indianapolis. Kelly received the award for her advancement of ESEA through her school improvement work throughout the Commonwealth, and I can attest to that because she's in my district many a times. For more than 27 years, she has dedicated her career to ensuring students receive a fair, equitable, and high-quality education. Through Kelly's leadership and oversight of school improvement, numerous schools have exited their low-performing status and maintained their success over time. Kelly's willingness to share her practice with others set her nomination apart. Sharing the practices that led to school improvement is evidenced by the book she co-authored, Without Trumpets: Continuous Education Improvement: Journey to Sustainability, which is a great book, and I highly recommend everybody reading it.
Never mind.
The book examines education in Kentucky, beginning with the landmark legislation in 1990. It discusses how changes in statute and regulation can be used to implement sustainable systems of continuous improvement. These go along with many other key components, such as knowledge about systems and organizational change and stakeholder partnerships. All are necessary for lasting school improvement. So let's give a round of applause and congratulations to Kelly. We appreciate all you do for us, Kelly. Thank you.
Any speeches?
No, thank you very much.
I will say also personally, I mean, Kelly worked in our district many a times, not when it was needed and also when it was needed. So I personally want to thank you for all you've done for Kentucky over your years. I know you could be anywhere you want in Kentucky as a superintendent or whatever you want to do. So thank you for working for all of Kentucky.
Excellent. Congratulations, Kelly. At this time, we have Mrs. McQuerry.
Yes.
Thank you.
Chair. Each year, state may select two distinguished schools for recognition at the annual National Association of Elementary and Secondary Education Act State Program Administrators Conference. There's a lot to say. Schools apply for the selection, and they participate in interviews with the Kentucky Department of Education staff. We had two schools from Kentucky selected, and they were Nicholas County Elementary, and that was for excellence in serving its migrant student program, their student population. And then we had WEB, William Academy for closing the achievement gap between student groups for two or more consecutive years. So congratulations to both of these schools.
Well, thank you so much. Congratulations to both of those schools and their leaders and educators and families. At this time, Jude has a recognition to share.
David Daniel, a junior at Owensboro High School, and Hen Yang, a senior at Connor High School in Boone County, were selected among the state's top student leaders to be part of the U.S. Senate Youth Program. Daniel and Yang will also each receive $10,000 worth of college scholarship for undergraduate study from the First Foundation. The students will represent Kentucky during the 61st Annual USSYP Washington Week, to be held March 4 through 11. The national student delegation has 104 students. The program brings the most outstanding high school students from around the nation to Washington, DC for an intensive week-long study of the federal government and the people who lead it. Zachary Clifton, a junior at Corbin Independent High School, and Audrey Gilbert, a senior at Frankfort Independent High School, were chosen as alternatives to the 2023 program. They may be asked to serve if the primary delegate is unable to participate. The selection process for the program is rigorous and includes an application interview and public affairs test. The number of Kentucky applicants for the 2022-23 program was almost double the number of applicants in recent years. Congratulations, David Daniel and Hen Yang. And just personally, I've actually had the opportunity to work with Hen Yang, as he's the student representative on the Boone County Board of Education. So we've done a lot of work together, and it's well-deserved on his part.
Oh, that's awesome. The church office, student representative on the board to know all of this.
John.
I'm just so proud of them. I love when Boone County folks is calling.
I know. I don't even know if you realize it. At this time, Mrs. Adams has a recognition. Kentucky Department of Education Pupil Transportation Branch Manager Alyssa Hanley will serve as Vice Chair of the National Congress on School Transportation at its 2025 meeting. Since 1939, the NCST has set standards and specifications pertaining to the effectiveness, efficiency, and safety of school buses across the country. And we all know as educators that we have to get those kids there and get them there safely in order for them to learn. And bus drivers have my total appreciation every day. All convenings bring together official representatives from states, including those who work at Departments of Education and in the public sector, safety sector. NCST is affiliated with the National Association of State Directors of Pupil Transportation Services. Hanley has been involved with the association since she started working at KDE in 2014. Prior to working at KDE, Hanley served in the Air Force and worked in private industry. Her background is in transporting cargo and troops, insurance, security, and more. Congratulations, Alyssa Hanley, on this. I'll add a personal note, too, and then I get to the chance to work with Alyssa from time to time in the School Financial Management Institute, and she is such a solid, quiet expert, locally at the state level and nationally in the work of safe school transportation. And we have a gem in her at the leadership level at KDE. And then Holly also, you forgot to meet her yesterday, but has an announcement about the State Teacher of the Year.
Yes. Yesterday, we had the pleasure of hearing from Mandy Perez. If you recall, she's from Creighton County Middle School. She's been honored as the Kentucky Representative of the Council of Chief State School Officers in the 2023 State Teachers of the Year cohort. Every year, the CCSSO names a Teacher of the Year from the United States Territories, the British of Columbia, and the Department of Defense Education activities. Perez has been a teacher for 18 years, starting at the elementary school. She taught third, fourth, fifth grades there, and then has moved up to the middle school, where she's been teaching sixth grade math and English Language Arts for a couple of years. Additionally, she has been appointed to serve on the Coalition for Sustaining the Profession. She serves many roles at Creighton County Middle School, including the Curriculum Instruction Committee, Literacy Committee, English Language Arts Content Team Leader, Sixth Grade Team Leader, and a new teacher mentor. So congratulations, Mandy.
Excellent. Lovely to get a chance to spend some time with her yesterday as well. Thanks, everyone, and thanks, Meredith and team, for pulling together good news. It's a great way to start our Wednesday morning. At this time, I've also asked that we move up our opportunity for board member sharing. I think we're going to get a chance to hear from, are we hearing from Jude now or later?
I'm heard in collaborative work.
Later on that collaborative work, okay. Dr. Robinson and I have had a chance to talk about some ideas as well, so just wanted to open this up generally for board member sharing. Thank you, Mrs. McQuerry. Instead of at the end of the meeting when we're all going really tired and we don't want to prolong the conversation, so fresh board member sharing at this point. So if you'd like to start, Patrice, please do.
Yes. I shared this information with Meredith, and she said this would be a really good time to share this. So I don't know if you're aware or not, but there is a Kentucky Teacher Hall of Fame, and it is housed at WKU, and is the Governor Louis V. Nunn Kentucky Teacher Hall of Fame, and they added three new members in November: Katie Cecil, Addie Henry, and Wilma Pace. Katie Cecil is an active teacher. She was in the classroom at this time, an English and public speaking teacher at LaRue County High School, and has spent 20-plus years in her teaching career there. Addie Henry retired from Breathitt County High School in 1996 after teaching there for 28 years, and the late Wilma Pace, she passed away in 2022, taught business, English, and French during her 29 years of her 29-year career, and she worked at South Marshall High School for part of her career during that time. And you can go online and see the full biography. There's also a National Teacher Hall of Fame. So we hear a lot about Black Books, the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame, the Baseball Hall of Fame. But there are Teacher Hall of Fame. Congratulations to those three humans up there.
Excellent. Dr. Robinson, if you will, please.
Well, I'm going to share that Monday, I had the treat of all treats. I mean, you know when you read to a child, you just get so much fulfillment and feedback. The principal at Greenup Elementary School in Jefferson County had asked several people to come and read to her kids books that were authored by African-American authors. And so, you know, my whole family signed up. My sister, my daughter. And I read The Year We Learned to Fly by Jacqueline Wilson. It's a MacArthur Fellow, and the book is illustrated by Lopez, who is a very, very highly recognized artist. And so it was just such a delight to engage with those first graders about the idea of their beautiful, brilliant minds, taking them to places when they feel afraid, when they feel alone, when they feel isolated, and their minds can help them solve problems and solve all these situations. And they got it. Because one young man said to me, "Well, Ms. Sharon, now, we don't really fly, right?" I said, "No." "What do you do?" And they said in unison, "Lift your arms. You close your eyes. You take a deep breath, and let your beautiful, brilliant mind take you to freedom and happiness."
That was well-spent.
That was time well-spent. And we're going to get to this issue of literacy and literacy so that all children are being taught life first time, because teachers are taught.
Thank you so much for doing that, for volunteering, for sharing the experience, and for letting everybody lift up their arms that day. What a great opportunity. I just want to double-check, Ms. Holly. Can you hear us okay? Welcome.
Yes, I can hear you fine. Thank you. Sorry that I missed yesterday.
I missed you, but thank you for the heroic effort to join us today.
You're more than welcome. I'm happy to be here.
Dr. Poe.
I'd just share out, you know, since it's CTE month and so forth, I visited Greenup County and Logan County. Their ATCs there, excellent job at both of those particular places. So if you ever get the chance, you should go see it. In Greenup County, you know, their ATCs do, you know, work basically for the community by taking orders and preparing things and sending things out. So it's a, you know, it's a good place to visit over by Ashland, if you're over that particular way, and Logan County on the west, in the west down there, past, by Western Kentucky, Bowling Green area. Just great CTE program. So did those. One part of the CTE visit was with Dr. Thompson on a speaking tour. So great, great job to both of those areas.
Excellent. Thank you for doing that. I have just a couple of items. Fisher and I got to meet by invitation with the superintendent from Paintsill Independent about a big new idea they have for some community-engaged business and industry work around developing a new school focused on STEM and workforce development there. So they are in the early phases of that work, but it was great to, I was inspired by their idea and by their commitment to the place where their students and families are, and the potential that they can bring to the table for that part of the state. So that was a lovely conversation. I also had the opportunity to join a spoke group with the commissioner last week at the Deeper Learning Dozen Convening in San Diego, and it was an extremely intense three-day experience. The commissioner wrote to us about it in his newsletter this past week, but much appreciative of the opportunity to go and to learn around this work with leaders in the field, thought leaders and practice leaders who are thinking about what scaling deeper learning, much like what we're striving to do here in Kentucky, what that looks like. So it was, I'll use the word intense one more time. It's a non-stop, morning-to-midnight kind of an experience, but I learned a lot, and it was a great opportunity. You may recall that the Deeper Learning Dozen, a national and international group convened in Kentucky last October. So it was great to be a part of that continuing work as well. I also would just preview that the conversation that Dr. Robinson and I have been having, including her note about reading to children, will be part of our literacy conversation when we're looking at KB Eagle. She may remember that a year ago, I think it was, when we went to the school for the deaf and started having conversations about, I think Letters was a big part of that conversation. Mickey and her team presented about the work that Mississippi had been doing. And as you know, that work continues to unfold and evolve across the Commonwealth. So we'll have some more conversations about that. Great. Thank you. Thank you. Meredith, thanks for moving that up. That's very helpful. So flowing right into that conversation, I will remind you that we worked with the National Association of State Boards of Education, and Paolo Di Maria was here with us at the last meeting to share, the December meeting, to share the report about our board self-assessment. And in that conversation, I think we came to the realization that we had been working on outward-facing board goals, which is extremely important. I take nothing away from that, because in terms of our policy work, we need to be really clear about the direction that we're headed as a state board of education in support of the commissioner and the team at the agency. But one of the things we had not attended to was more of an internal focus on the kind of board goals that we may have as a high-functioning organization. What would it look like to move that forward? So our official goals, we generally set in October when we're working on the commissioner's performance appraisal, and then those things kind of align really nicely between his professional goals and our goals as a board. But today, I wanted to pause for a few moments on the agenda to think back to that report from Paolo and some of that conversation, to remind that conversation from December, to think about what we may want to codify as goals that we have for ourselves as a team. So I know you saw it as an agenda item. I don't know if I had sprung one off of the agenda item to kind of prime your thinking pump on this, but let's just pause for a minute. If we have ideas, we'll just throw these out. It is just ideation at this point, and Meredith and I and Sharon can work on formalizing these and bringing them back at the April meeting for your consideration. So this is really just a time to think out loud with a viewing.
Chairman, I'm going to suggest that to state, quite equated, that we are going to address the fundamental issue of literacy development in our department. I do believe that, you know, we know how, and I'm not sure, you know, clearly, if we had the answer, we'd already be done. We wouldn't be having this conversation. So with all humility, but with the gray deal of determination, let's not push it to the back of our heart and say, "Well, we did an intervention, spending precious resources, more of an intervention. We'll take anything from that." But how do we keep from having to treat the intervention? And I really want to face that question.
I agree. I agree. And you always inspire me to think really openly about the challenges that we face. I agree that if we all knew how to nail early literacy instruction, we'd be doing it, and we wouldn't be facing serious achievement problems on behalf of some of the students in our schools. At the same time, I also hear you, and you mentioned this yesterday, too, that we need to do this with a lot of grace and humility for our educator preparation programs, too, who have experienced that same kind of deep-in-at-the-pool learning when it comes to what's the best, what are the best approaches to ensuring that every child has access to good literacy instruction across the Commonwealth. So to put a couple of legs ideas on Sharon's conviction, we might think about two things at least come to mind. You all have plenty of other ideas, but one of the things I think we want to do, if I think back to February of 2022 and Danville, I found myself, who's been, this is my 41st year in education, scratching my head a little bit about what the real points of conflict were in the reading wars or the science of reading versus whole language versus, and it's fairly technical stuff. So one of the things I think maybe in terms of our own internal board learning is that we can really lean on the commissioner and his team to inform us, inform us not just about one direction, but help us to understand the breadth of the issue. I look at you two and know, you know, these issues to your very core. I don't. I don't. In defense of other folks at the table, you know, we're in different places in terms of our understanding of the ins and outs of early literacy training. And then some of you, Holly, for example, is also engaged in the pre-service education part of the pipeline, and what those conversations look like as you train elementary teachers. So I think we have a lot of individual expertise and talent on the board, but maybe we could spend some of our own learning time together at these meetings or even in workshop sessions together, complying with open meetings requirements, of course. But learning about that, I think, is really important. And then another leg that we can think about with this as an internal board goal, internal and external frankly, is that we need to lock arms with the Education Professional Standards Board, with the Council for Post-Secondary Education, and especially those higher ed partners who do train teachers, to have a family conversation, a partner conversation about what's in the best interest, so that we don't continue to pick one another apart in the process. So recognizing that we all have a lot to learn about literacy, knowing that there are multiple approaches, but also knowing that this is becoming part of the national dialogue to address concerns around reading attainment, I think that that's a laudable goal for us as an organization.
Chair.
Dr. Poe.
Amen to everything that Logan said. But in addition to that, I would like us to focus on math, too, because I think that our math scores aren't getting better than our literacy. So our literacy and math numeracy goes hand-in-hand with that. So everything you said, if we could just implement math in that conversation.
Math, too.
Because I know that, and I've had these conversations with the Professional Standards Board in the past, you know, we have students who graduate from our post-secondary institutes with A+, and then they don't pass the practice exam, and after you take an internal look, it's not because they don't know math, it's because the exposure of the math that they're asked on that test, they had it four years ago, and then they take a remediation course, and then they pass, but they have to pay X number of dollars to take a remediation course, and it's not needed. It's just exposure at that time. So there's a lot of disalignment in those practice tests to what the teachers are learning, and it goes further. You know, they have about 100% pass rate after they retake the course, so you know it's exposure.
Excellent. And we did have that kind of prequel conversation about, should we fold these two together? I really do think that we need to recognize both, accept both as board goals, but I think we keep them separate. I don't think this is about a, you know, big broad swath of reading and math.
No.
But we can, yeah, okay.
But, you know, when we're bringing Mickey up, and they're talking about literacy, and we're going on those things, we also have to have a conversation with mathematics separately, but have that conversation.
Yeah. Dr. Robinson.
So perhaps this board needs, like, as the commissioner, to assist us in getting the ball rolling on a collaborative process to engage the appropriate, I would say, policy entities, the Standards Board, the board, representatives from CPE, to craft a resolution that would help us really focus our energy and attention on, you know, how do we solve it in a systemic and integrated way, so that we have more confidence that we're doing what we should do in terms of our teaching.
And I think that a resolution would definitely be a great outcome for this work. And then from there, I think that resolution would help us clarify Dr. Ella's common values that we have across the continuum, across the pipeline, in that conversation. And I think that would be a really powerful place for us to be, a launchpad, if you will, for all of the literacy work that we have ahead of us, all of the math instructional work we have ahead of us, too. Mrs. McQuerry and then Dr. Glass.
I would love to see something come into play about, we talked about remediation, we talked about foundational skills. I would also love to see something come into play for gifted, our talented. Yesterday's presentation was amazing, the data that they shared, that given that opportunity, the children who rose to that challenge. So I would love to be thought of as the board who makes all of those opportunities of our children.
Well, and I appreciate you saying that. And I know it almost sounds trivial to say all meets all, but we do have, we need to meet the needs of every Kentucky learner, and even if she's way ahead of where she might be in literacy development, we need to ensure that we're taking her as far as we can go while we have her. So I think that's an important part of our conversations as well. I don't think we're looking at, I don't think we, knowing this board, I don't think we will look at just focusing on one end of the spectrum, not taking care of all the kids in the process. So I think that's.
Thank you. I think that when it comes to foundational literacy and also numeracy in the same breath, that we really, we're in a period of change with that record. And some of that has been driven by the availability of federal COVID relief dollars that we have used. And some of that has been driven by the availability of federal COVID relief dollars uh that we have used. A good portion of that for um the letters training, literacy efforts, um the elevation of Vicky Ray, her role with her focus on literacy, the interest that the legislature has had in literacy policy, um, the addition of the Read to Succeed Act that's now being implemented now. So there's a lot happening. And that's not to say that there wasn't a lot happening before, but it does feel like that we're like in a period of shift. Um, and so I think a part of what uh will be helpful, uh, it, it's always good for me to just uh, understand how we got to where we are and sort of what's underway. Um, so what's uh some of the background? Of course, we have people at this table, Polly, uh notably, who are real experts in this. Uh, we have, we have a lot of this history, but uh to get a common understanding of, of the journey that we've been on, where we currently are, and then from that point, decide what are the next steps uh that need to be taken. Some of the worst um policy errors that I have uh and have been complicit with has been the prescription before the diagnosis. Uh, so, so that's, I think, part of it is to really take stock of where we are and how we got here and then chart the course forward. And then I, I think people in board um have to, or you need to consider, what is the uh, what's the space that you play at? So you have regulatory authority, uh, that's, that's direct authority that we have. So what, what regulations do you control, or could you control, or could you put in place that would have an impact on this? Um, and then uh beyond, but beyond the formal authority that you have, uh, how can you uh exercise the influence that you have uh to make, make change? And that's either through um advocacy, uh, or it's uh by the power of pulling people together or the conversations that you have with PPSBD on a regular basis. Uh, you have uh Dr. Thompson, Dr. Ella, that are sitting here uh on this, as part of this board. So those are our partners on higher ed, which has got a big part of this as well. Um, so I, I think um when we, we think about the literacy element uh, uh alone, there's a lot happening. There's a lot that could be done. Um, and I, I, I think it's a, it's a worthy effort to undertake, but uh it's going, we need to be, I think, to commit to this for some time. Cause I think we really need to understand. And then if we want to have an impact, um, think about how we get all of the plates spinning at the same time. There are various, various different entities that control those.
Excellent. Thank you. And I agree. I heard an amen over here too. Dr. Pope.
Got a question, Commissioner Glass. Are, are you continuing the uh United We Learn summits and things like that on an ongoing basis? If, if we do, it would be great to have sessions in that, that not only for us, but for others that, that, you know, the updates that they give and other districts that can hear to it.
Yeah. Um, well, uh, do you mean the, like, the education summit?
Yeah, we had the other, you know, a year or so ago, I, I thought it was great.
Yeah. Yeah, we really haven't, and I, I think it was on thread of Tony Chapman uh saying she was going to resign. We really uh had not uh envisioned the summit as being an annual event. It was really kind of a kickoff or what we thought was a um, the, sort of the culmination of the listening effort that we had and, and the priorities that raised in Kentucky around that, that became the foundational elements of United We Learn. So I think it's important that we uh not lose sight of those uh and, and to keep, keep our efforts around deep, deep and meaningful student experiences, assessment and accountability, innovation, uh collaboration uh with our communities. But I, I think, and Jal Mena's written about this, that he calls it a pernicious myth, that you have to do
Basics.
Basics before you do deeper learning. Uh, so it's with, you do them together and they are dependent on each other. A, a fundamental divorce from application um and meaningful experiences, drudgery and routine and disengaging. Uh, and uh engagement without uh rigor or challenge is, is exercised without a real purpose. Uh, so you really need both together. Um, so I, I think that we, we can pick up this focus on literacy and numeracy. And if that's what board wants, wants to put its energy behind, I'm entirely supportive of that. Uh, but we can do it with uh the United We Learn.
I think that's a really important place for us to land, because we have all with gumption uh jumped into the notion of deeper, more personalized learning as a path to equity. And the United We Learn efforts have grown, they've become bigger than life and our experience. And that is always instilled the right work, but that's not an anti uh literacy or math effort. In fact, it's just the opposite. As you said, it is, um, it's critically important that we integrate those conversations around deeper learning and, and, and all of this is part and parcel of the larger vision for United We Learn. And I think that's really important for us to capture in our goals as well.
Maybe, I guess, instead of, you know, so Tony does it lately, uh, instead of doing separate, we could integrate those into our state associations and have those conversations. I just think we need to have that on a broader scale with them, because as you just said eloquently about deeper learning and so forth. I think there's, there's still some that, you know, they're going to talk about, well, we can't do that because we don't have the basics and so forth. So we've got to be out there selling that message and getting more people to take advantage of the letters training and so forth. And I think if we open that up, because there's not a principal uh or instructional coach that I know of that's been to letters at half in front of it. I wish I had this ten years ago. And I just think those, those types of testimonials and, and presentations to other principals would get more of them signing up. So we don't have any vacant spots.
Dr. Todd.
Yeah, I had to wait for like stem. Too many times I think it's not working. People favored in something about it, but if you're not really driving the nail through the board and making it stick, it's not going to have lasting impacts. Wonder about how we get things done. You look at what Nancy Kentucky said yesterday, they're worried about the speed, the teacher problem. Getting teachers to teach those subjects, keeping teachers in safe, to continue to teach those subjects. Is there what mechanism works best for getting change in the system? I'm not sure. You work on reading for years and years and years and still have issues there. There's a lot of good episodic stuff going on in these channels. A lot of it's really about philanthropy. Uh, but my view is philanthropy is the spice for the recipe, but the basic recipe needs to be scored by the state. And you, you look at something that works, where you reduce remediation in math and science and so forth, that helps the whole system. When you um when you have something that works, why don't we do more of it? What percentage of schools, what percentage of teachers have access to type of episodic stuff? Are there some things that we need to? Just for years in, in Kentucky, I talked, I, you know, two before and you take a bunch of tin jinny nails, you kind of tap them in place. Say, yeah, we got that, we got that, we got this. You got to drive some things into the ground and make it stick. And we've got an opportune time to do it. And I just wonder about the mechanism, how you can make it work. Because uh you got this, something big and that there were twenty-four teachers that are trying to support teaching in science. That's okay, some of it in our lives, but then you know what happens later. So I'm not recommending anything, I'm just kind of trying to figure out how do you make change and make it sustain, make it stick? And the mechanisms of the past, we need to look at and figure out if they worked or not worked, or what has worked. I was, when I was with the NSF Education Board, I used to say, give these grants to people and they can have five-year grants to really come in and do something exciting. They had something that really, really worked. Go and give them another follow-on grant, but tell them to find a way where it can stick. And professors, T W always said, you gotta give it in mind, give it in mind just before careful. And the mind will change and something make it better. And uh there's a little bit of that going on now, but too many times we do short-term investment. And it's kind of like the phone rubber pillow thing, while you've got that investment inside, but then you walk away and it goes right back to where it was. And you're talking about the same problem. But I, I think we got to dive deeper on how we're going to really make this work.
I think that's really helpful. And in terms of the way we um express and articulate this goal, I think, I think we're describing the learning agenda for us as a board policymaking organization. And then in the course of that, the field, um, here's the work we model for them, um, what this looks like. And of course, everyone shares in the learning that we experience along the way. So um, I, I think we've um done a really good job with United We Learn and our deeper learning, cultural learner efforts um as the first um foray into the learning agenda on the part of the State Board of Education. And so I think expanding that conversation, uh, not, not diverting away from it, not changing course, uh, but ensuring that the depth and the woven nature of literacy and math are a part of that larger agenda. I think is an important and worthy pursuit.
So Chair, if we ask the uh commissioner, they will perhaps come to us in April with a, a kind of uh a draft idea of how we provide some of this work and help keep us uh to help, help keep us uh called to a doubt to find a way uh to continue learning, to develop a discipline uh based on and a plan that will lead to our further enlightenment and guides to to the fulfillment of this problem. And uh, Ms. Blumberg.
I, I like all of these conversations. One thing I would like for us to consider is bringing some of those groups together across the state that work in literacy and numeracy. Because I feel like right now, it's sometimes it feels like groups against each other. And I think there's more commonalities than not. And I think getting everybody that's working in literacy and the different groups across the state together to find those commonalities and to strengthen everybody's work. I think that's the best way to go.
I think so. And um, since the commissioner arrived, we've had the DNA as a team that we listen deeply. And uh, and that we don't, in fact, diagnose or prescribe before we diagnose. So I think that's important in the conversation as well. And I don't know enough about the math wars, Joanna, to know if those same kinds of polarizing uh conversations are happening in that regard. Uh, but in terms of our own learning agendas, this is all the work. Um, deeper learning is not a pursuit forward that leaves math, literacy and STEM behind. So how do we model the fullness of our challenge in developing the very best learning experiences for Kentucky children? Uh, United We Learn provides maybe the two by four in Lee's description. And then we have to make sure that we are always hammering uh the right nails uh to make them stick. If I can stretch that just a little bit, Lee, I don't know. Um, another area for us, I want us to think about, and June will share more about this a little bit later on, but um one of the conversations that I've been engaging in, you've, you've seen some pieces of uh early filed legislation around the role of uh students on boards. And so um, I did ask Meredith to gather some information from the National Association for State Boards to look at what other states do in terms of the privileges that they afford to their student members. And so that exploration is underway and we might uh point to a board goal where, again, not leaping to any requests, but let's learn together um so that we have, be sure that our student members have good experiences and that we benefit from all they have to offer this board. Um, and then to go back to the um comments from Paolo, we did, all of our board assessment numbers were really quite good, but the two areas that appeared as a bit of heartburn for us were around ways to increase uh public opinion, public comment, um, authenticity and and then also uh ways to build broader support for missions and commissioning goals, which I think is what we just talked about with this learning agenda. Are there other goal ideas that come to mind? Things that you'd like to see us work? The big ones. Pretty heavy, pretty heavy stuff. Uh, Dr. House.
Uh, I think we can revisit this conversation uh at our, at the next meeting and spend some time really focusing on which of these efforts um is where the board wants to put its energies. Uh, I I am sort of thinking about that, that maximum problem of trying to boil the ocean. And all of these things that we've raised are really important. So we talked about the priorities that are within United We Learn and the efforts we have under way around that. Board has recently finished its work around portrait of graduate. There's a lot to do with the advancement of that.
Agreed.
And centering on that, we raise up literacy and numeracy, we raise up STEM, GT, we raise up visibility in the board. So I'll, I think you can pick any one of those and say, this is really important. Let's put our energy behind it. I don't know that you can do them all at once. Um, it's, it's hard to argue that any of them are not. They're all important. Um, but I think it's, it is that matter of uh Jim Collins wrote about you cannonballs and you only have so much, so many cannonballs and so much gunpowder, meaning that you've only got so much energy, right? And what do you want to expend it on? And, and that has to be focused and targeted. So I, I think that's one of the, one of the questions for, for the board to wrestle with is which of these really is the priority in the board?
And I think that caution is uh wise. And perhaps, Meredith, we could um riff on what Sharon suggested and attempted. We could put language around these considerations that we just chatted about. Get those out to the board, ask you to weigh in in terms of prioritizing, um, and then what that might look like. As either Dr. Pope or Dr. Glass said, this is a long game. This is not what we're going to do by Thursday. So um, what, what would it look like if we bring these back to the table, spend some time, let's, let's really, where, where, where do we have the dry powder to do, to do, what do we have the dry powder to do next? And um, how can we incorporate that with the United We Learn work that's already underway in such a way that it makes sense to us? Um, again, not a diversion away from any of um our floor work, but I think that might help us uh move forward in a more.
True. Just to um, again, reflect on where we've been, when I was first hired, the first meeting that I was on with you, I think I was driving across the country, you know, I was in Missouri or something, uh, visiting this board. And you passed a resolution on racial equity, which really launched the department into what has now been two years of work around that. We've built an extraordinary team around that. It's largely funded with relief funds, so it's going to become dismantled. Uh, so that's, that's distressing, but it also puts all more pressure on us to get as, build as much capacity as we can, put as many resources in place as we can, uh, and with the time and resources that we've got. That conversation we had with the House Education Committee yesterday, it'd be all the evidence you need that that work is not done. And we've got, that work to do around that issue. So uh, I will remind you of that priority. You also asked me when I started to spend some time listening to the priorities of the state. That was what came forward in United We Learn, which are three big lifts. Changing the experience of the student, of all the problem project-based work that we have underway, that's extraordinary to think about taking that scale. And really changing what students are doing on a day-to-day basis. If you're not changing that, you're not really changing anything. So, so that work is underway. We just focused on, had more focus on the assessment and accountability changes that we contemplate. Um, changing, you heard Dr. Lyons yesterday talk about the different pathways that might take. One of those was to change, fundamentally change the structure of the assessment systems and how accountability systems are. and how accountability systems are designed. Wow, just focusing on that would be extraordinary. So I mean, you could take any part of this and go deep on it and think, this is a lot to bite off. So I guess I just come back to, I don't know, Dr. Trump probably calculated the temperature it takes to boil the ocean, but it is a lot, I'm sure. And so how much energy do we have?
What do we want? I think, I think that's an important point when you're making, I want to make sure or just comment that I think we're not asking for anything different than what you just said. I think that when you look at racial equity, for example, that's the core of all the problems that we're talking about in literacy and literacy and the other things. I think what I'm hoping that we get is not any, going off in any other direction. Everything you've mentioned is great, and it's great work that we're doing. It's for us as a board to understand the core work within those areas that you're talking about. Not going off in anywhere else, don't want that. Because each of those things that you've mentioned are together. If we're focused on racial equity in the learning process, and I agree, we did a great job with that. They, you know, that was sad on some of those legislators' parts, just exactly. But that we have to be focused on our students that aren't performing well. And the reality of that is, is our equity groups. And, you know, for years, the legislators told us to, you know, focus on narrowing the gap. So we're trying to do that, and then they want to call us a global organization. I mean, you know, they needed civic assistance. So, but we need to continue to be focused on racial equity, but getting at the core of what we're doing here as a department. I think that's the bigger issue or the issue that we're asking. It's not going off in a different lane, but let us know the core work so that we can also help you explain that, the core work to those groups. You did a fantastic job explaining that, saying, let me see that, you know? That's what I always say to somebody, let me see. I thought that was a great comment that he made. So, but that's what we need to know a better job so that when we're talking to individuals, we know what to say as opposed to not knowing what to say.
Yeah, I agree. I think that's why we really have to think about this, that's our learning agenda. Certainly not a new initiative, certainly not an abandonment of any of the ongoing traction that we have around United We Learn, but instead, learning together as a board. Gretzky always said, skate to where the buck's going to be. And so I think that's what he said, I didn't think about. It's a great quote, though. That's the kind of conversation I think that this would lead to. But I appreciate your caution and your, the care that you take to make sure, you know, that we don't, in fact, try to boil an ocean or chase rabbits or any of those kinds of things. So we do have to remain very, very focused on what matters in terms of the policy that we consider. So I would recommend, Dr. Brewer, that we not actually take a motion on this today, but to do as Sharon suggested, you and Sharon and I can work on what language this might look like. Push it out to you guys and ask you to do a simple Google form or something to prioritize them. And then when we come back, we can overlay these internal board conversations with our, the four goals that we approved back, the five board goals that we approved back in October, and then just open up for consideration and action around which goals we want to target now. And so again, maybe in the prioritization, it shows us a timeline about how we should tackle different aspects of the learning agenda. Yes?
Just one last thought that I'm having, since this conversation is unfolding. I think I've been around the block long enough to see how long real change really takes in the education system. And we often have these conversations around urgency and something's going to happen, blow it up. And I get excited by all that, too. But the reality is that you, for the changes that we're seeing, you really, hearts and minds shifts, right? People need to believe things differently, they need to be equipped with a different set of tools, a different vision of what learning could look like. That takes a long time.
Yeah.
I have really not seen any significant change that it takes, take at least five years of focus to bring about. So I'm reminded of, and we have to be always cautious in drawing analogies. But if you want any organism to adapt and change, the top factor in that is something called adherence. Meaning you have to keep doing it, and keep doing it, and keep doing, keep doing. And that is the most important thing, especially when it's a long cycle change, significant change efforts that I think we are trying to bring about. So there is always interest in, our problems will stand in line, right? They'll just keep coming. We have all kinds of things that are really important. But I think starting to develop with the board around what is it that you're going to, what is it that you want to make your imprint on? And do you have the, can we have discipline to be, have adherence to that for the time that it takes really to make the change?
Exactly. Leadership matters in that conversation. It matters a lot, along with the focus. All right, thank you. Thank you guys so much. At this time, we're going to return to our partner reports, starting with Dr. Ellis.
Okay, I will keep this brief, but I think it aligns well, and we always welcome partnerships, as you all know. And we are always glad to be at the table with you. So just a few updates. We have a lot going on, just as you guys do as well. So in the same vein of literacy and partnership, we are in partnership with KDE to offer literacy grants to our schools of education to provide for the Read to Achieve. So it's for the Read to Achieve grant recipients. It is out, the RFP is out right now for our Ed Prep programs, private and public, that will address the professional learning requirement of the Read to Achieve legislation and Senate Bill 9 for alignment. So that is out, and we've had great questions already, so we're looking forward to the RFPs being submitted. We will keep you posted on outcomes on that, obviously. We also have a CPE Student Success Summit coming up. It's at the end of this month. And so this campus teams are invited to attend best practice workshops and develop action plans for continuous improvement. In-person registration closes on the 15th. We welcome anyone to come. I think it'll be rich. There are different tracks that focus on transfer, that focuses on on how to support students for academic and just their own well-being. There's lots of great opportunities. Also, the CPE has formed an action network to examine food and housing insecurity. That has been a big issue, especially during COVID. And so we actually have teams on our campuses, we have university faculty members that are conducting campus voice research projects on just needs, on what students need versus what campuses are offering, and really trying to connect that to keep them from going home or not pursuing their post-secondary goals because they don't have food or they don't have what they need to survive. And so we're really anxious to see the outcomes of that, and we'll keep you posted. We also were granted funding to improve our transfer policies. So we're really working on that from two-year to four-year, and four-year, four-year, and even high school students with dual credit. So really banking in on those transfer credits, and if it's an affordability issue and it's a completion thing that we want to continue to improve. We do have three student voice fellows that were selected to serve as research fellows for our student success partners. They just got brought on, and so we will keep you in touch. They're going to be conducting a lot of our research around student needs and wraparound supports for student success on campuses. And then we did have a continuing meeting last week. It was really a great conversation about working together, very similar conversations, how we can share common messaging, what the priorities are, and how to pursue that. And really, Commissioner, to your point, around belief and value change of how we change behaviors, on what we believe in, and how do we come to consensus on that? And that's not easy. That's like herding cats. And so we had really robust conversations of just how folks could come to the table with the, with the role groups that they represent and bring different perspectives. So we are aware and not thinking that we always know what's best, but that we are listening to the voices of Kentuckians and really acting on that, which is one of our norms. And last but not least, we are offering a, starting next week, a dual credit webinar. We're in the process of updating that policy and then also providing resources to enhance student enrollment, a more diverse student enrollment in dual credit, and really increase access and awareness. We have incredible support from our General Assembly to pay for, up to right now, four dual credit classes in academics and up to 10 in CTE. That is a huge opportunity, but if students are not aware of their opportunities and they don't have the support, it will, it will not be really taken advantage of. And so we're going to be providing just some time information for folks to learn from others in the states, not just us talking. But it's about a 30-minute webinar that talks about what we know in Kentucky, how to get engaged, the dual credit scholarship, how to advise families and students, and really starting to bring those resources to life for folks. So we have lots of people who are signed on from our different campuses and KTE policymakers, on just what is out there for dual credit to really bring awareness and consistent communication. So that'll be kicking off next week. So lots and lots of other things going on. We are, and the last thing I do want to share is, we did have our last iteration, thanks to the partnership with KDE, with the funding that we received, we were able to do one last iteration of the Summer Bridge program. So that RFP is also out. We did have an evaluation, an external evaluation initial, and really are seeing positive results. The biggest issue is recruitment, because students would have to give up time at work to attend Summer Bridge. So we're really looking into different ways to meet the needs of students, to make sure that they have transportation, that we are not inhibiting them from working, because this is the, you know, how folks survive. These are not always traditional students, too, and we have to be cognizant of that. So we learned a lot from the evaluation, and we have changed some of the RFP to refine that and do deeper dive into the impact of Summer Bridge programming, whether that is residential or not. And so we're really encouraged by what we have seen and what we're learning, and hopefully we'll continue to enhance that. That is my report. In about two minutes, I'm very young and happy to answer questions.
What question on behalf of Dr. Ellis?
Yeah, so I'm hearing a lot of work on kind of like the student life agenda. So I guess my question is, how are we keeping track of student life issues? The impact of some of the supports that we are developing? And I'm going to leave to work, how are we making this sustainable? I mean, it's like, it's not like this has to be what we do. I mean, it can't be the add-on. It is, it's not the patient.
I love your question. So this has been a big focus area for us, especially during COVID. I've really brought to light needs, and the food scarcity piece, had never really been talked about as much as it was during the COVID time, what we learned. And that didn't just happen because of COVID. So it really brought to light the wraparound services that students need to succeed. And it's not just getting that grade or just going for triggering, but how do they even have their basic needs met? And so I will have to say, every time we have campuses share out, a big piece of what they're sharing is what they're doing to help students sustain. And so it has really, Dr. Robson, really become the thing. I will note a couple that have brought to our attention, but Northern Kentucky University has repurposed their first-year freshman experience to really being student-focused on instead of, are you ready to come to our campus? So their mindset has really changed around how they monitor students and doing some really incredible work around that. UK shared a couple of meetings ago about the intentionality, and they're huge, you know, that calls students when they start to struggle academically. They have their RA's that are much better trained on watching for needs as students. They're actually calling students and checking with them, and they have near-peer support. It's been quite incredible about the shift that the campuses are taking to be much more student, intentionally student-focused on meeting their needs and being aware when there are struggles. They will tell you, though, their number one issue right now is really meeting the needs of mental health, needs on campus. And so what they're trying to do is really reach their students that it may not require always a mental health therapist, that may be a tutor, maybe it's an academic issue that there are other supports on campus, and making sure students are aware of what's out there. So they do get the service they need when they need it. And so it's really become a piece on sustaining enrollment and student success and helping them get through those bumps in the road. And so it has really become the focus. I think another piece on that is that when the performance funding really focuses on underrepresented minority students, first generation, and low income, there's additional supports that are needed to really diversify our student body. And so our campuses have really stepped up, honestly. Pretty much all of our campuses have really shared their efforts, that they've gone above and beyond to welcome students, to increase the diversity of our campuses, but then provide supports around success. And so it's been really interesting and encouraging to hear what they do. Just because I haven't mentioned the other campuses, they come and they share. Commissioners there are a lot of times in our work session. And so when they share out, it's about how they're supporting their students. And so not just recruiting to get them there, but how do they sustain? And so sustainability and basic needs have really have become the thing of how do we help our students survive and succeed and thrive? And so it's been quite the shift. And just in my short time there to hear the conversations change, it's really, it's encouraging to me. It's hard work, and it's commitment. It's a resource commitment that the campuses have made. And we'll tell you, it's a challenge, but they're seeing results. And so it's, and they all have approached it very different, which is interesting, too, to see the approaches, but.
I love it. But not so subtle shift from, are you ready for college to, is college ready for you? I think it's critical. We heard a deeper learning dozen last week, an anecdotal number of students who drop out the first day of college because they can't find a place to park.
Yeah.
You know, the college wasn't ready for them that day. So I think those things are really important to think about. We're looking forward, we can't afford to lose one. All right. Thank you so much. Always a pleasure. Also joining us today, welcome Sam Flynn, who is here on behalf of Secretary Link in the Education and Labor Cabinet. Sam, it's lovely to have you today. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chairperson, and thank you all for having me. I'm a poor substitute for Secretary Link, but I'll endeavor to make this report a good one and one that is informational for you all. As you noted, I'm here on behalf of the Education and Labor Cabinet. And, you know, our report today is going to focus on sort of a number of workforce initiatives that are ongoing in the cabinet, some of which folks in KDE will be well aware of, and some of which we're actively working with KDE staff on. Those include, of course, the Governor's Everybody Counts Program. Of course, the ongoing progress in developing the workforce pipeline at the Blue Oval SK site. The recently announced digital equity, sorry, Digital Equity and Accessibility Listening Tour. The Kentucky Education and Workforce Collaborative's recent work with a focus on workforce strategies for justice-involved individuals. And lastly, the expanding, sort of expanding the impact of the Kentucky Adult Education Program and some of the steps that we've taken recently. And sort of starting from the top, as you all know, last year, the Education and Workforce Development Cabinet, and now the Education and Labor Cabinet, endeavored to put into action the Governor's Everybody Counts Program, which is a program that will help every, you know, Jefferson County public school graduate who didn't currently have, or didn't at the time have a plan for after-high-school graduation, basically to secure a pathway, one of three pathways, a job at one of four participating companies, post-secondary enrollment, or both. And in the most recent budget, the General Assembly was kind enough to provide $10 million over the next biennium to implement this program on a continuing basis, and also to look towards expansion of that program. And we're happy to announce that we are looking at expanding the great success that we had in Jefferson County this past year. And we're looking at expanding to three additional counties. And we're currently working with Shelby and Fayette Counties with meetings scheduled in the coming weeks with them. We were pleased to announce that we confirmed participation with Franklin County. And we'll be having a pathway job fair with Franklin County Schools on April 19th at the Franklin County High School. With respect to Jefferson County and sort of trying to continue the ongoing success that we've had there, um, success that we've had there, uh, we've scheduled, uh, a county work and learn luncheon with, uh, GLI on February 16th, and that will be an employer recruitment of, event, and that'll be targeted at sort of expanding that, that group of four employers that participated, uh, in 2022, uh, to, to, it, to beyond that, of, of course. Um, we'll also be holding a JCPS Pathway Exploration Fair on April 15th at Jefferson Community Technical College. And, and finally, we've, we've, uh, set, uh, I think it's tentative set, uh, date for the JCPS Signing Day, uh, for, for May 20th at the Kentucky International Convention Center, um, and, and we look forward to that. Uh, the next item, um, that, that we'd like to update on is the ongoing, uh, workforce development, uh, initiatives with, uh, Blue Oval SK, and, and we've taken some steps sort of outside of the, the Harden County area to recruit individuals to the, to the Blue Oval SK side, sort of build out that workforce pipeline. Uh, and that includes working with the Bluegrass Army Depot, um, to recruit individuals, uh, that, that were staffed or currently are staffed at the Bluegrass Army Depot, uh, to those, to those, um, uh, Blue Oval SK positions. Um, we're, uh, attempting to attract those, those workers, and we've had a, a tour of the Richmond Career Center, uh, and we're working closely with the Bluegrass Army Depot staff, uh, to set up informational sessions and interviews with those, those individuals. Um, on a separate note, uh, but related to Blue Oval SK, uh, and Deputy Secretary Brennely informed me this morning, um, that, uh, you know, of course, we're working with Dr. Harvest, uh, Hargis to ensure that Blue Oval SK is aware of the, the Mechatronics Program and Track Programs, uh, of, of course, to support, you know, the talent pipeline development that's, that's ongoing, uh, at Blue Oval SK. Uh, the next piece, uh, that we would like to report on is the Digital Equity and Accessibility Listening Tour. Uh, some, some of you may have, have heard this, at the most recent Team Kentucky update on Thursday, uh, the governor announced, uh, that the grant that was received for digital equity and accessibility, um, planning, uh, is, is taking effect and that there will be a six-week listening tour, uh, to gain insight and feedback from key stakeholders like, like you and, and our, our education partners as we develop, uh, a state broad, state broadband and digital equity plan. Um, that'll consist of 14 listening sessions. Uh, those begin on February 14th and, and on March 21st, and those will be, uh, tuned towards targeting audiences including, um, general population, aging individuals, uh, incarcerated individuals, veterans, individuals with disabilities, individuals with a language barrier, uh, racial and ethnic minority groups, uh, individuals that, uh, primarily reside in rural areas, and individuals who live in covered households. Um, and of course, you know, we, we always appreciate KDE and, and the board's support in, in these endeavors, and, and we do hope that you'll, it'll help us spread the word. Um, the information available is, is at broadband.ky.gov, and, and that can be shared, and we're, we're happy to, to share additional information, um, with you all. I believe, um, Deputy Secretary Brennely will be meeting with Associate Commissioner Couch to discuss, uh, digital equity of, of, uh, and digital needs, uh, for students and schools this week, and, and we look forward to that conversation as well. The next piece on our report, uh, relates to the Kentucky Education and Workforce Collaborative, and their, and specifically their work on, um, you know, helping justice-involved folks, uh, re-enter the workforce. Uh, and to that, to that, and during the, the last meeting or the most recent meeting, uh, the collaborative launched a new initiative and a new work group, uh, that's, that, that will be entitled "The Jobs on Day One Work Group." And, and that work group will be tasked, uh, with, with developing a strategic plan, uh, to ensure that employment, uh, is immediately, uh, available for justice-involved individuals upon their release. Uh, and there's a, a projected timeline, uh, for that, for the development of that plan, and, and we look to have that in the next, um, two quarters. And we, we do anticipate having, uh, an update, uh, to be shared at the next Education and Workforce Collaborative meeting, uh, and hopefully, uh, so, some, some great progress, uh, to that end, uh, to be provided to, to this board, uh, at its next meeting. Um, one of the, one of the, uh, additional pieces that the collaborative will be looking at, uh, in its next meeting will be work-based learning ecosystems, and, and Dr. Hargis and, and her team will be a, a vital part of that discussion, uh, as well. And then the final, final piece of our, our report today, and, um, is, is related to adult education, and, and particularly, uh, expanding the impact of, of our, uh, Adult, Office of Adult Education, which we're, we're very proud, uh, in the cabinet and the administration. Um, and we're pleased to announce that, that we've entered into a new partnership with Goodwill, uh, that's going to address literacy and upskilling for Goodwill employees through their Goodwill Earn and Learn Program. Uh, and we're also, uh, implementing a targeted social media effort to, uh, reach out to more of the folks that, that, um, could take advantage of the Office of Adult Education programs, um, you know, including those of working age, that, that 18 to 64 crowd. Uh, and that, that is the summation of our, our, our report, and be happy to take any questions.
Well, thank you so much. Do you guys have questions for Mr. Flynn? Dr. Todd?
What's your profile of the workforce that you're being asked to support with the new president that are coming? Uh, you know, what, what percentage are high school graduates, what percentage are, you know, the next level, and so forth?
Uh, I'm sorry, Dr. Todd, I, I couldn't hear you very well. Could, could you repeat the question?
I just wanted to know what the profile of the need for the employers that are coming into the state? How many high schools graduates will they hire or looking for? How many at the next level? Maybe to college level? How many at the bachelor's level? Any above that?
I don't have those, those statistics on hand, but we'll be happy to, to, to get those and, and obviously provide them to you and to the, to the committee.
Is the workforce coming up much in the economic development recruiting process?
They do, uh, they, they do on sort of the tail end, uh, of that, that, um, that process. We've learned that, um, the economic development sort of drives the workforce development. Uh, it's, it's not sort of the other way around where the workforce, uh, is driving the economic development.
I think just some side information, just like to see what the, what their needs are. But you did a great job, a lot of work, you got a lot coming at you. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor.
Other questions for Sam? All right. Thank you so much. You can tell Secretary Link that you were an outstanding fan. Appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Much appreciated, Doctor. Thank you all.
Uh-huh. And now a report from Commissioner Lance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, your notes and, uh, board information has the more traditional report than I typically give, but we have a special treat, uh, for you with my report, uh, to date. Since 1992, the Kentucky Education Technology System, or the KEAT system, has been the pioneer, national leader in most aspects of education, technology, investment, infrastructure, and support for public school districts. A vital part of this effort has been the strong partnership between individuals and entities that continue to assist the Kentucky Department of Education in fulfilling its mission to students and citizens in common will. Named after the late William E. Stillwell, PhD, the Stillwell Award is presented to the unsung heroes that have gone above and beyond the call of duty and education and technology. They devote their efforts entirely to our K-12 students, teachers, administrators. Identified by their red suspenders, the annual Stillwell Award winners represent the best of the best who show up in the tireless service to Kentucky schools and the high-quality education technology services and supports that are required. Um, this next section, uh, may clue you into we have a certain West Point grad. One of the U.S. Army's most prestigious, uh, awards is the Meritorious Service Medal. The 2022 Bell Stillwell Award is just as distinctive, according to David. For 2022, the unique, a unique version of the red suspenders award, Meritorious Medal in the form of a celebratory coin, has been commissioned, commissioned and presented to key, key and critical K-12 education technology staff in all K-12 Kentucky school districts and the KDE Office of Education Technology. The thinking point signifies the individual's successful and meritorious tour of duty from the 10th of March 2020 to the 11th of March 2022, providing quality education technology services above and beyond on school campus for Kentucky's K-12 students, teachers, staff, families throughout the 24 more, 24-month tour of the pandemic. This service provided the connection with students and families to their schools for the continuation of learning and student path supports. Therefore, let it be known that the 2022 Stillwell Award winner is being presented here on February 8, 2023, to the education technology that was at the Kentucky School for the Blind and the Kentucky School for the Deaf, as a simple but sincere and heartfelt way of saying thank you for your accomplishments, your dedication, your sacrifices over these past 24 months, as well as for your continued persistence toward excellence. And this is presented to KSB staff, and if you could please rise when I call your name, Connie Kill, Linda Spiegelmeier, Jason Harmon, Leanne Edelen. That's the staff of KSB. Thank you all very much. First of all. KSB, we have Jared Mills, Jonathan Woodall, and Renee Combs. I really appreciate this tradition and, uh, what the Stillwell Award has come to signify. We're so proud of all of the staff at KSB and KSD. Thank you, uh, technology staff for the work that you do. Uh, just as a point of departure, I also wanted, while we, uh, have this person here, acknowledge a significant contribution, uh, for a person in the room. Uh, David Couch, I mentioned earlier, uh, he's sporting the red suspenders back there. Uh, David is also, uh, this month celebrating his 30th year at KDE. Uh, he, David, in his 30 years, has worked for 92 different commissioners. I am the one, I am the one who requires the most remediation, but David, it's been an incredible, uh, effort and, uh, accomplishment. You can look at the systems that Kentucky has in place that are largely due to, uh, your, uh, leadership. And when I think about that concept of adherents, uh, you, you signify that. So, thank you.
Can I have the point?
Oh, I do. I have a bunch of stuff in front of me that I'm supposed to give away.
One job.
I mentioned that I have. I have, so if I, uh, called your name, please come on up. Have these, uh, challenge boards. There we go. With the reds, oops, it's got a brush on the board. With red suspenders on it, so, thank you very much. Thank you. Yeah. You want to do a picture, Joe? Come on up. No, we'll, we'll, we'll bring everybody up. Thank you. Here you go. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. And one of these, there we go. Thank you. Great community. All right. Where would you like us? Uh, here? Yeah. All right. Man, you're going to be a picture.
And movies.
Well, uh, Dan, tell him what you did. Yeah. All right. Come on in here. Like, act like you like each other.
But the thought, I don't know, it's a really good space for everyone to sit, so.
Great. Or a little horseshoe cake.
Please do. Uh, David, do you have anything to talk about?
I love the red suspenders, but I also had to, uh, comment and say thank you for all you've done for Kentucky, and I know you built the particular network because I was there 30 years ago, uh, learning the KEAT's master plan and all that stuff. And people don't realize that what, what you do, you're running a bigger operation than the Fortune 100 companies do here, and he's another one like Kelly and could've went anywhere and made big, big busts, but, uh, thank you for what you've done for the students at Kentucky and, and for my career, because I started out in the district office, uh, what did we call them back in those days? The district technology coordinator and so forth, and, uh, it led me to expand into other things, but we went from having single machines to coaxial to all kinds of things, cat five and all those types of things, and, uh, it's, it's been an amazing journey of what you built in Kentucky. It's your second to none, so, thank you. Thank you.
I also like, I also like that he's a Johnson Central graduate, and, uh, he was also an All-American basketball player, and, uh, he, uh, he was, uh, graduated about two, three years after I did, and, uh, so, uh, I'm awful proud of him, and, uh, again, I was started out 30 years ago, we didn't have hardly any technology, and watched it grow under his leadership, and, uh, so he's done an outstanding job, and I'm awful proud of him in Johnson County, I'll tell you that.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, I don't want to eulogize David any more. He'll be down in 10 more years at his 40th anniversary. Many, many thanks and congratulations to our teams at KSD and KSB for the work that you do to support technology integration for every learner at your schools, and we really, really appreciate you and are proud of the work that you do. We love visiting, uh, both campuses and, and when we're there, always impressed with the technology, uh, the invisible, invisible technology that we experience in your schools. So thank you for that. Oh, I'm sorry, not for Todd.
I'm in David, I know about 25 years ago.
Oh, boring eulogy.
I had a company in technology, and we got together somehow, I think you brought some seats there, or you crossed paths, and I remember after hearing your background, I thought, well, he won't last long there. Be learning something somewhere, but, uh, I, I just watched what you've done over the years and the breadth of what you do, and the impact that you had, especially during COVID, it's just been tremendous, so, thanks for sticking around. Appreciate you very much. Take it up, guys.
And we are doing great on time, but we are going to take about a five-minute bio break, and we will get started again at 10:36. Uh, we will jump right back in. Thank you again for that lovely recognition. Thank you so much, David, for, uh, your leadership and for this chance to just stop a minute and recognize how wonderful the technology infrastructure is with the Kentucky Department of Education and Public School. Uh, we are delighted by the next item, uh, on the agenda, and I will turn it over to Associate Commissioner Kelly Foster.
Great, thank you. Um, I just wanted to kind of walk you through a little bit of the journey of Breckin County. And so Breckin County schools went into state management in December of 2012, and they went through another management audit during 2018, and the board at the time in September of 2018 voted to keep them in state management. Then in December of 2019, they transitioned to state assistance, and then we conducted a management audit, uh, September 19th through 23rd this past year, right after the flood. We were supposed to go in August, and so we had to push that back a little bit, but we were there for a week in September, and then we have been doing some things from afar with them as far as the audit, and we come to you today with the recommendation to exit Breckin County from state assistance. So they have had an extremely long journey, and I would just like to take a moment to recognize their superintendent, Philip Watts, that is with us, their local Board of Education, the teachers, uh, faculty and staff, the students, and the community. their local Board of Education, the teachers, faculty and staff, the students and the community members there in Breathitt County. They have had a journey and the culture of that entire district has changed. They have done many positives like passing a middle tax that has allowed them to move to a standard through 12th grade high school, which has given lots of opportunities and access, you know, starting in middle school. They also are getting ready to complete a $15 million project or K-2 facility that will hopefully open sometime coming down in August. We're, we're a little bit behind the schedule on that, but we're, we're ready to get, get it going. But more importantly than facilities, it's really the culture that they have created. And that Superintendent Watts has created a culture of learning and very much a student-first across the district. So, just really excited for them today and bringing that recommendation to you all to exit them from state assistance.
Excellent. Superintendent Watts, would you like to come up, please, and bask for a moment? In the glow of today's decision that we're about to make. So, we'd love to hear from you.
Just like to thank you all for the opportunity to be here. I think Dr. Foster did a great job there. She's kind of humbled me with all the kind words. Been a long time. Been working with her and her department for, me in particularly, for over five years. I couldn't say enough good things about the relationship and progress we have made under her leadership. I really appreciate Commissioner Glass, you and the rest of the board. You are some of the first people that reached out to us during the floods and just appreciate your leadership and on the ground at our school to see your students and everything that's going on. Really, I've got to say thank you to Dr. Foster and our whole team. Also, Rob and Kenny, I've got to know her really well. She's got a wonderful team of anyone from Greg Dunbar to David Couch, you name them. I know they're phone call away and they've always been very supportive of Breathitt County Schools. So, you all have a lot to be proud of, the, the team and the product that you're pushing out to us to help provide assistance and help us grow and, and improve our leadership. So, I'm humbled and thankful. And most importantly, Dr. Foster covered all of them, but very proud of our local Board of Education, very proud of all of our parents, community staff, students. And just, I'm humbled and very thankful to be here today. Thank you.
I'll make a few more comments, but before we do that, I would ask the board to entertain a motion to approve, sorry, wrong spot, to release the Breathitt County School District from state assistance. Do I have such a motion?
So, wait.
Absolutely. We have a motion for Mr. Trumbull and a second from Ms. Adams. Any further discussion? Yes, sir.
I just might add that I have had a chance to get to know Superintendent Watts in the course of supporting Breathitt County after their sudden floods from this summer. Not only is his whole team and district and board to be commended for the extraordinary effort that in years that it took to emerge from state management, we're so proud of them for that. But Superintendent Watts, I want to say that I really admire you as a leader and how you, I've seen how you're a person who shies away from the spotlight. We had a whole gaggle of cameras there that you were not wanting to get in front of when we were there. But you did it because you knew it was, it was going to be a good thing. The attention and support was going to be good for your community and future. And I really admired that. It's really been a delight getting to know you and see you leading your support.
Excellent. Mr. Trumbull.
I know. Very well, personally, every year. Just wanted to know how proud I am that the job that he's done, he's a graduate of Breathitt County, so he has a vested interest. And that school being successfully being the best school system that it possibly could be. He's been working for five years. That's why they moved out of management to assistance now, out of assistance. So, his great leadership, he's outstanding person, outstanding superintendent, and I'm sure he'll keep leading them in the right direction. So, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you both for the kind words.
All those in favor, please respond by saying the kind word of aye. All of those know, motion carries. The Kentucky Board of Education. Kentucky Board of Education recognizes and congratulates Superintendent Watts, the Breathitt County Board of Education, the educators, families, students and community members across Breathitt County on this important accomplishment. Thank you for the servant's heart that you have demonstrated throughout the time that you've worked to make systemic improvements across Breathitt County Schools. The vision of the district has changed and is evident in all the projects that Dr. Foster mentioned earlier, including his 12th grade campus that allowed more opportunities and access for students across Breathitt County and a new $15 million preschool through grade two building that is scheduled to open in 2023. We cannot congratulate you any more heartily to you and your team for this great work. And we look forward to the continued success of you and Breathitt County Schools. Congratulations. And Kelly, we don't have any schools in state?
All right. Very thrilled. The first time since 2013.
Congratulations, everyone. At this time, I'm delighted to turn it over to Ms. Dolly and Dr. Robinson to share about the student engagement collaborative work that they're doing with the National Association for State Boards of Education.
Thank you so much for letting us present. But before I begin with the content, I'd like to give a quick summary of what NASB's student engagement collaborative entailed of. So, this was NASB's first student collaborative and it was open to student board members across the nation. Each student member was paired up with a mentor from their board, mine being Dr. Robinson. And we really collaborated with our mentor as well as the other students. So, the collaborative was set under virtual Zoom sessions where NASB staff taught us the ropes on creating an action plan. So, we first started by choosing a school-related health issue, finding data and researching that health issue, developing a problem statement, engaging with stakeholders, and then finally presenting our work. We also had regional check-ins where we worked hand-in-hand with our mentors, which we really worked on data collection and also strategies for our presentation. So, overall, this collaborative was an amazing experience and I do want to thank NASB and the board for allowing me to be a part of that. And I know, big shout out to Selena. She is watching. She let me know. So, she helped me a lot and she's such a great mentor. So, I wanted to thank her for that. But moving on to the content of my presentation, I really wanted to hit on the issue of school connectedness and behavior management. So, what is school connectedness? School connectedness is the sensation when students feel supported for and cared for by their teachers and peers, overall promoting a positive connection with the school set. One way for schools and staff to build school connectedness is by implementing positive behavior classroom management strategy. The CDC knows that students who feel more connected to their schools are less likely to experience performance of health, substance abuse and in-school violence, all of which are common causes for behavioral and experience of community and throughout our state. Along with school connectedness, social, emotional and academic development speed is also valuable in providing the best learning environment for students. The five key policies received according to the Education Trust include discipline, professional development, rigorous and culturally sustained curriculum, student, family and community engagement, and also wraparound services. The Education Trust frames all policies except for discipline as supportive in Kentucky, leaving that Kentucky, their discipline policy ranked as least supported. According to NASB's School Health Policy Database, Kentucky does not address any authorized exclusionary disciplines or regated plans for students who are suspended or expelled. But to hit more on the Education Trust ranking of Kentucky. So, the image attached shows the ranking of each state's discipline policies under the Education Trust. And Kentucky is one of 12 states the Education Trust ranks as least supported. So, given their standards, Kentucky does not meet the state goals portion or the policies guidance and funding portion. This is because there's no clear statement or goal to reduce and address the use of exclusionary disciplinary practices as well as disparity in discipline under the FSA. Other reasons include how Kentucky has not banned harmful disciplinary practices or policies and also has limited to no funding for the store of justice effort. Of all subcategories, Kentucky does not meet six of seven under discipline. But they do meet one, which is data collection and reporting, referencing how Kentucky publicly reports their discipline data through the Kentucky Report Card, the Annual Statistic Report, et cetera. So, given this information, it was time for me to come up with a problem statement. I found that school connectedness is critical in providing the best educational environment for students to grow and develop. Limiting harsh disciplinary actions and intensive behavioral management skills will foster a sense of community in schools. Kentucky schools, students and teachers thrive in a positive and mindful learning environment. Now, moving on to the data-heavy portion of the presentation. I'm starting with the school's 50 annual statistic report, in-school removals, followed by how school suspensions are the most cited outcomes for behavior events. In the 2122 school year, the report showed there are over 180,000 in-school district removals. There's also 165 expulsions, a combination of within and without services, 17 corporal punishments and over 60,000 out-school suspensions. This data showed me that students are frequently being removed from the classroom as a result to their behavior resolutions. The statistic report also provided information contextualizing the behavior events. So, there are roughly 25,000 events involving substances. This actually showed a twofold increase from the 2019-2020 school year. There are also 5,000 events involving assault and violence, increasing by over 1,000 in the 2019-2020 school year. There were 1,203 events involving deadly weapons, another significant event in recent three years. And lastly, over 15,000 events involve bullying or harassment. So, thinking back to school connectedness for a moment, students who feel more connected to their school are less likely to experience substance abuse, violence and mental health issues. If students feel more connected with their school, these numbers could change their outcomes. Moving on to the 2021-22 Kentucky Report Card, specifically the Quality of School Climate and Safety Survey. In middle school students, 40% of middle school students believe that their school rules weren't fair. And 30% of students believe that the consequences for breaking these rules were not the same for all students. To the statements, adults from my school stay calm when dealing with bad behavior. 28% of students disagreed, while 11% strongly disagreed to a majority of 39% of students disagreeing with that statement. Personally, this statistic was very alarming because not only does bad behavior cloud and interrupt the learning environment, but handling the situation poorly can escalate the event. If students feel as if their school rules aren't fair, that situations aren't handled correctly, school connectedness flows. Following this same survey and statements, I also wanted to bring up high school students. So, high school students actually showed similar patterns, but there was an increase in disapproval in the statements, the school rules aren't fair and the consequences for breaking school rules are the same for all students. Almost half of high school students in Kentucky believe that the consequences of breaking rules are not the same for all. 31% of students disagreed that adults in their school could stay calm when dealing with bad behavior. Although this percentage is lower in high school students than middle school students, it's obvious that the issue is prevalent in both of those states. Same with the Kentucky Report Card, moving on to the safety portion. There were over 200,000 behavior events reported in 2021, 2022. The report card distinguishes behavior by grade, type, location, context, resolutions and also legal sections. When it came to discipline and resolutions, in African American students, there were 26 expulsions within and without services, 30,000 suspensions, 20,000 in-school district removals. For students who are economically disadvantaged, the school year consisted of 130 expulsions, almost 50,000 suspensions, 16 corporal punishments and 76,000 in-school ones. As you may notice, these numbers do overlap. In specific with gender disabilities, there were 31 expulsions, 16,000 suspensions, 7 corporal punishments and 17,000 in-school district removals. So, the main reason I really chose the display is because students of color and those with disabilities and those in minority groups tend to fall victim to the harsh disciplinary practices. This is true nationally and there's a lot of data to prove that. But I just wanted to mention Kentucky specifically. And then for more statistics comparing it to the white student population or other student populations, that can all be found on the image attached and. But as my role on this board, I also really wanted to show some student testimony. So, I did reach out to students and stakeholders and I asked them to describe a behavior event, good or bad, that has happened in their school area. One student told me that to promote participation, their teacher would often threaten students with disciplinary consequences. This left them feeling forced to participate and they never really were engaged with the content. Something that hit close to home specifically because I was a peer tutor in middle school. Another student described a situation that took place a few years ago in their area. They told me about two students, one with ADHD and five motor abilities, which hindered their writing abilities. And also another with ADHD and autism who experienced struggles focusing on their work and completing many assigned activities in school. In response, they would be punished by standing out of recess. Two students were frustrated with the learning environment and did not thrive in a school setting. In the end, their families decided to put students out from school and opt for home school. Those testimonies showed that those involved did not feel connected with their school and also showed examples of how mishandling situations can harm students. This slide is definitely boosting KDE specifically, but I did want to address the current actions to support multi-tiered systems of support. So, the KYPZIS project aims to promote state and supportive learning environments for Kentucky students. The program focuses on helping students implement positive, proactive and instructional strategies to aid students. Another program in place, supported by the state, is ABR. So, the University of Louisville's Academic and Behavioral Response to Intervention Project is funded through the Part B of the State Idea Act. This program provides a blended approach of effective instruction and classroom management that is structured to provide statewide support. And then the last current action I'd like to hit on is the nine special education cooperatives, which offer members for district professional learning opportunities. So, they offer opportunities specifically in math, literacy and behavior. These programs offer wonderful opportunities for districts and schools to utilize. But a common theme that we actually spoke about in today's meeting and yesterday's meeting is that although Kentucky already offers these resources, not many utilize the resources we have. So, one of my recommendations is to promote using these resources that Kentucky already has. Creating new resources is going to be hard. And I know that given all of our other goals, it's not necessarily possible currently. So, promoting all that we already have, I feel like was a better strategy. So, although some schools and districts are already utilizing these programs, given the information from the School Safety Annual Statistic Report and the Kentucky Report Card and the student testimonies, behavior is still a prevalent issue in Kentucky in the handling of behavior. So, by utilizing professional enhancement opportunities, districts and schools can better reach tier one MTSAs, ensuring that all students receive high-quality, evidence-based instruction and school-wide behavioral expectations. I also suggest that classroom management professors' professional learning opportunities be enhanced and utilized. Behavior management and handling has progressed over time as education has. It is important to continuously improve these training opportunities. According to the School Safety Annual Statistic Report, 66.9% of all behavior events take place in the classroom. That's roughly two-thirds where teachers are first responders. Getting back to school connectedness, positive classroom behavioral management skills can promote school connectedness. Some behavior management practices include enforcing class rules consistently, addressing problematic behaviors as they occur, and also ensuring that consequences are understood before events occur. By promoting management skills, teachers can feel more prepared in handling such events. And students can have more confidence that their teachers can stay calm when handling situations. By ensuring that consequences are set in stone and understood by all parties beforehand, this can also help reduce the number of disagreement in the states that I mentioned. The school rules are fair and the consequences for breaking school rules are the same for all students. The next I want to hit on my next steps personally. So, one of Kentucky's, one of our states and what we talk about in this board a lot is United Learn. And one of United Learn's key features is creating vibrant learning experience. So, I want to bring this project to United. So I want to bring this project to United We Learn, specifically that Standing Committee. If students don't feel connected to their school, then these vibrant learning experiences cannot happen if they don't feel safe in their environment. There is no vibrant experience. So I do want to bring that up to them, and so I plan to reach out, collaborate with the Standing Committee to identify and implement these classroom management skills into their upcoming projects. Of course, this is still uncertain. I do have to adapt to them, and I plan to do that in the next couple of weeks. But if the committee would like to collaborate, I believe that identifying and speaking to districts that already have successful behavioral practices can be very rewarding hearing from their experiences so we know how we can implement those into all districts. So that is all I have for you today. But thank you for giving me the opportunity to present, and if you guys have any questions, say now is the time or you can move.
Congratulations. I think we didn't mean to already take down the question slide. Let's stop and talk with Jude about her work.
Well, I would like to make a comment. I think this shows the importance of us having a student representative and teacher representative on our board here. There's things that we talk about at every board meeting here, very lofty and very important. But until we take care of the needs of the students and the teachers, none of these can be taken care of. So I really thank you, Jude, and I know that just about any student and any teacher in this state that you talk to would say that these are some of their major concerns, is the classroom behavior and the management of that, and making our schools a place where all students feel important and feel like they are safe and warm. So I thank you so much for that. It's a very well put together report. And I'm just very impressed and pleased to have you on this board.
Thank you so much. I'm glad to be here.
So Robert. When I had the opportunity to meet you, I was third as her mentor. It was, I really don't know what's, but really what it means of being coming apart and learn. And being a voice or a point for reflection on this perspective, the student perspective, the teacher perspective. And when Jude told me, she started out way up here, you know, social-emotional learning, world peace.
World peace.
Yeah, world peace. And got to students being connected at school. And that notion of equity, diversity, and belonging are essential components of student and then to watch her investigate this topic and understand that one way into this is simple sense of well-being based on student behavior instruction. So I appreciate the chance to have points this perspective on the reality of the student experience and how important that felt to be here. Not to let them, but to be paid here as a part of that community. How would my new career get? So, fellow board members, those who are watching, they say it's not, this isn't a little child, this is a young adult about to lead us and gaining perspective on issues that are very concerned and can be addressed. So how do we help all the adults in the building understand that part of their job is to be trusted, that students to take action necessary to maintain a high-quality environment of work? That's part of the job of everybody. And it's not just, it's adults, that surveys them adults. So initially, we're looking at this from a number of perspectives, and I commend you also finding pathways to continue this engagement on the topic. And United We Learn offered that opportunity when she's committed to it.
Excellent. I appreciate it too, Jude, so much. I'm a longtime flag-waving believer in the notion that schools are safe from the inside out. And when young people do find the connections that you're talking about, they experience those connections, and then the result of that is belonging. I think we are leaps and bounds ahead of the issue and that the experience is blown out of that sense of belonging to this place. So I appreciate that. I also can't help but remember just recently with the release of the Commissioner's Student Advisory Council's work around school safety, that this is a lovely compliment to the work that that team has recently produced on student-led research, and I appreciate that so much. And then to add that third leg to the stool around how that becomes a part of the vibrant experience for every child and youth in Kentucky public schools, I think this really powerful approach to better understanding. People throw out issues about student behavior and classroom management, but really deeply understanding that, I think, opened the conversation in a very powerful way.
Thank you. And I actually did reach out to some of the students on the Commissioner's Council, and they offered me amazing feedback. So shout out to all the students that helped me make this. And also Dr. Robinson, thank you so much. She was so right. I was aiming for world peace at the beginning. There, I think it was like a really, really long doom call that brought me back. And without her, I definitely wouldn't have gotten any of this done. Meredith offered me so many resources. Stacy, I could not do anything without Stacy.
I can't either.
So yeah, it's the team effort. So thank you to everyone that helped me.
Well, I think the commissioner said earlier that you'll be at world peace in five years.
That's the strategic plan.
All right, congratulations. Any other questions for Jude?
This is the mental. Hi, thank you. So many important conversations.
And the next item on my agenda, on our agenda, we have, pardon me, 18 coming up for the Kentucky United We Learn Council update with us. Our Chief Performance Officer Karen Dodd, Division Director David Cook, and Kentucky United We Learn Council Chair Audrey Gilbert.
Thank you, Chair Young. David and I are thrilled to have Audrey here with us today. She's yet another young adult who is helping us to lead United We Learn and doing an excellent job at it. I'm actually going to turn this first part on over to her. She's going to give us a little bit of a recap on the November meeting from her perspective and talk about what the Standing Committee put into November then.
Thank you. So in November, some of you might have watched. I know Karen was there. So we met for the first time as the Kentucky United We Learn Council, the school council, and group of really cool people, if you ask me. We talked about all of our goals, the history of United We Learn. We heard from Dr. Lyons that you all heard from yesterday. We heard from KnowledgeWorks. We listened to our outside partners, and we listened to the voices of Kentuckians to hear what they wanted to get out of the school council. It was a really exciting experience for me because it was a day that I normally would have spent at school with the same people I talk to about these issues every day, but hearing the different perspectives around the state was really nice for me. Our Standing Committees have met, and we'll go into those in just a few minutes, but they're currently meeting. Some of them met yesterday. We don't have those updates quite yet because it's a lot of work, a lot of process, you know. But you can watch those Standing Committee meetings every time they meet on our KDE Watch Live portal, just like everybody's watching you right now.
This is reality television.
And you can watch it as many times as you want with the recording. Sometimes I go back and watch you all for fun. So yeah. You welcome to watch those to stay up to date on this beyond what I'm giving you here as an update. So Meredith, next. We'll start with the vibrant learning experiences committee that Jude just talked about. They met in December. They also met again Monday, Monday. They met again Monday. They're still processing that work, you know. But they started to talk more about their goal. We call this the Big Harry Audacious Goal, V-HAG, is what she'll appear, which is an interesting term, not one that you're likely to forget. So they welcomed their chair, Justin Dunning. He is a student at Lyon County High School, another young adult who is leading the work in Kentucky. It's really great to see the commitment to student voice in some of our chairs and the leadership of the school council. And they talked about their vision, wanting to hear from Kentuckians, wanting to talk about the vibrant learning experiences that are already happening and moving forward with the efforts that we're already doing to scale it to a larger level. Next slide, I think. They did talk about their learning agenda, just how they want to learn all those things, that they want to gain that experience and understand what's happening. And then, like I said, they met again on Monday. They'll meet again in March. So if you can watch that, you can go back and watch Mondays. You can also watch the December 19th if you're really that interested. So next slide. The next committee is accelerating innovation. They also elected their chair, Kathy Stolpe from Louisville. She's a community member. And their co-chair, Sarah Hatton, who's an educator from Adair County. So you're seeing the full circle of the United We Learn inclusion there. You've got a student member, you've got a community member, an educator. We have everyone truly involved at the core of this process. They talked about scaling innovations across the state. So we know that a lot of great work is happening in Kentucky, but we want to make sure that everybody has access to that work and can adapt it to the ways that they want to do it. So they talked about that. They also talked about their goals, their big V-HAG, their six-month goal that they created in November, and they put some plans into work on that. Next slide. They also met in groups to talk about how they can collect information. This is a big goal for all three of our Standing Committees, is understanding what's currently happening in Kentucky because we want to draw from the resources that are close to home. We want to make sure that we're not just bringing in outside resources to tell us what to do. We're learning from each other. So they're working on that. They're looking at what is happening outside of Kentucky because we do have some that we can learn. Other states are doing some great work as well. We would like to model and match that, maybe exceed that in Kentucky. They also met on Monday. We had a very eventful day on Monday, and you can go back and watch that too. They'll also meet again in March. And then our last one, but certainly not the least, from the Bold New Futures Committee. They met on January 23rd. We'll be meeting again on Monday if you want to watch. I'll be there. Meredith will be there. But we talked about the work that's currently happening in Kentucky on policies, the work that's happening in other states, and where we can go with that. We elected our chair and vice chair, Kayla Bates, another student, let's point that one out, as our chair, and Bentley White, another student, as our vice chair. So once again, just pulling in all that inclusion, truly making an co-creation process and committing to those efforts in the United We Learn. Next slide. We talked about the innovative habits. You all have heard about the innovative habits of inclusion, empathy, co-creation, reciprocity over and over again. We wanted to continue keeping those at the center of our work, so we talked about those during our meeting. What we can do with those, both within our committee and outside of it in our everyday life, making sure that we are committed to those habits and that we are incorporating them in everything that we do so that we can stay true to this work. Then, next slide. We also talked about the work with KnowledgeWorks. So you all heard a little bit about that yesterday. We talked about the opportunity analysis and state policy framework that they're working on for us. They are great partners in this work with the Bold New Future Committee, and every time they talk, we learn something new. It's wonderful. We also talked about Fortunate Learner, just making sure that we know everything that's happening before we dive in on anything like recommendations or talking points and things like that. And we'll meet again on Monday. I think. It's back to Karen.
All right, so what we're doing now, we are preparing monthly newsletters. The first one went out last week. Everyone should have received that. If you did not, please let Meredith know. We'll make sure to get you on that distribution list. So that's just to keep everybody informed from the chair's point of view, which right now is Audrey, though Audrey has a little feature article, feature paragraph, I suppose we would say, on there. Also, just an update from each one of the committees. It'll be a very short update just to keep everybody in the know on what's going on there. We're also introducing some of the council members as we go through and put these newsletters out. So there are 72 council members. It'll take us a while to get through and introduce all of those, but that's part of the effort. There's also some links in there if you want to go and watch, as Audrey is encouraging you to do. If you want to see any of those, you can find this link on the newsletter as well. The webpage, we have been updating the webpage. There's one for the council, and then we've added some pages behind that for each one of the committees. So they will be putting their agendas out there, the summary from all of their meetings, as well as the link to watch. And finally, in April, we will meet again as a full council. That is happening at the Blair Center, which is in Shelby County. It's on the campus of, I believe, South Side Elementary. So that'll be another two-day event that we will have there. And Jude, if you need any assistance getting with the Vibrant Learning Experience Committee, let me know. I'm happy to hook you up with them. I'm sure they'll be thrilled to hear from you.
Thank you.
I was just going to add to part of this presentation, one of the things that I think is also exciting across population committees, and the Bold New Futures Committee is reaching out to the Vibrant Learning Experiences Committee to get their policy varied barriers so that working together to think about not just trying to do it here, just their standing. Standing committee, so. There's a whole lot of other work. We'll get to it later. We'll be getting that out, how the grant, this is a chunk of the grant is the council, but we also tested it.
Chair Young, we would like to send an invitation to board members to join us at the beginning of the second day in the afternoon. We have technically scheduled a panel discussion for board members to debate with council members to talk through recommendations that have emerged from our meeting and the work in committee. So would be to be mindful of reaching a board, both could have to find board members with attendance at that event. April the?
Fourth of the fifth. Or the fifth.
It's a Tuesday, Wednesday.
More detailed information is.
Okay.
Yes, please do. Thank you. Other questions for the United We Learn team?
Great. Thank you for helping us continue to put the pieces together. At this time, KDE, the Kentucky Commissioner, Robert Kenny. It's Karen Wake. Up there's Karen, and Division Director Karen Worth will provide an overview of the budget request process. We learned about, we've been learning about ABRs over the past few years together. And so we, I think it was the last week, Robert and Karen are going to join us over a series of sprints to talk about ABRs this time instead of one longer conversation. Okay, take it away.
Thank you, Chair Young. It's a pleasure to be here with you today. As I listen to your conversations this morning, you really teed us up nicely to start talking about the buying your budget request. You know, you've talked about these important topics that you're really interested in. And sometimes, although not always, some of those big, important topics take money to be able to execute and implement. So I would ask, as you continue your discussions and the priority of those discussions, coming up with the ones that you really have interest in, that you think that we will be running alongside you as we are listening so that we can capture your thoughts and then create the buying your budget request. It's hard to believe it's February, and we're starting this journey together again. For some of you that have not been with us before, we'll try to share enough in today's presentation so you kind of know the process itself. But for many of you, you have been on this road with us before. And as we were examining ways to improve our process and to allow you as board members to have more thought time on those important ABRs, which are additional budget requests, those are amounts that we need above and beyond sort of our baseline budget, we have reformatted sort of how we envision this process working this time. We've invited some of our colleagues from the various offices here at KDE to be available and join us at the table as we talk about ABRs so that you can have a more deep dive and ask those business-related questions of our. those business-related questions of our experts that manage, um, the programs or the initiatives or, and, and the money, quite frankly, around what's going on. It also will allow you to learn more about the, um, need for the funds and maybe, um, and outcomes that are expected. So if we're going to invest money, um, what do we expect as the outcomes by the investment of that money? So let, uh, Meredith, if you can jump us to the first slide, uh, we'll have a couple of our program offices with us today. Um, just a little bit of primer for those of you that haven't been through this journey with us before. Um, we are currently, the panel currently is in a short session, legislative session, and typically the biennial budget is prepared in the long session. So even though it's February and we're starting to talk right now, this will actually be submitted to the governor and recommended as part of his, uh, recommended budget for next year. So it would actually start in July of twenty twenty-four. So there's a little bit of confusion right now, because you hear all these talk about money right now in this session typically, and there's conversation, will they open the budget? Will they not open the budget? Uh, this is not typically the time that they would open the budget, but never say never. You know, we, we see things that break history all the time. Um, we also, as we submit, um, we submit with our strategic plan, a four-year strategic plan. And so we listen very carefully about the work of United We Learn and the strategy around that. Also, we listen, um, and coordinate with Karen Dodd and her team about strategic plans and goals of the department. Next slide, please. So let's explore together sort of this new route that we're going to take. Um, we do typically start this discussion in February, and so today's discussion, we're actually going to talk with you about the six-year capital plan. And the reason we do that is we actually start that process and start moving it through the various state government reviews in April. So we are actually prepared today to talk to you about recommended projects for the six-year capital plan, and also to provide you a little bit of information of what we've been doing on our six-year capital plan in the last, um, in this biennial. Made a lot of progress. We, um, got a lot of, uh, support from the General Assembly for capital improvement, um, at K S B, K S D, and the F F A Leadership Center. So we'll share with you a little bit about what's been going on. Um, and then we're going to talk today also about some, we, we've kind of designated them repeat A B Rs, and those are A B Rs that you might be more familiar with, because we've had them in front of you before. So you'll be a little more familiar with those. We thought we would kind of talk about those at February, and then that allows us more time in the, in the upcoming months to really delve into new things, new ideas and new issues that you want to cover. Um, and then you can just see on the slide, we are going to sprinkle, as Chair Young said, each meeting from now until August, and then culminating with the final review in October, we'll add more A B Rs. That will allow you to provide feedback to us. Um, think about these things in the interim between each meeting. So if you want us to cost something out a little bit differently, it'll allow us to be more interactive with you as we think about what that looks like. Um, so let's jump right in. I'm going to turn it over to Karen Worth. Karen is our budget director here, and Karen's going to talk to us about the six-year capital plan and the projects we are recommending.
Thank you, Robin. Good morning. Good to see everybody. Uh, so yes, we are starting this biennial budget request. It feels like we just finished one, but we're starting again. Uh, so I'm going to talk a little bit about our six-year plan. So our six-year plan, uh, for the twenty twenty-four, twenty thirty planning cycle, uh, the preliminary deadline to submit, that is April fifteenth. Uh, but there will be occasions when we will have the opportunity to do some edits to our plan, uh, before the final submission on November first. So, um, we submit our plan for our capital construction projects for our three campuses, such as D School for the Blind, D School for the Deaf, and then our F F A Leadership Training Center, uh, in Parnesburg. So as Robin said, you know, we always come and talk about need, and you know, when you're maintaining buildings and facilities, there's always going to be a need. Uh, but we wanted to just take a minute today and share some of the things that we've been able to accomplish, um, thanks to the money that's been appropriated, um, through the capital construction project method by the, uh, General Assembly. So, uh, we have a brief replacement and repair pool. Uh, we have been able to repair or replace, uh, roofs at seven buildings across both of our schools. Uh, so that's been, uh, that's been huge for us. Uh, share the picture. Next slide, Meredith. Uh, one of the replacements is at K S B. This is our gymnasium. A lot of athletic activities go on here, as well as our physical education program for our students. Uh, so, uh, very excited about all of the progress that we're making. Um, additionally, we have, uh, next slide, please. Uh, we have an HVAC repair and replacement pool. Uh, we have been able to repair or replace systems across both of our school campuses, and we have several more slated to start in the fall. Uh, that has been a huge endeavor, um, with, um, supply chain issues, but we're getting there, and we're very, very pleased at the progress that we're starting to see. Uh, we also previously funded what we call our maintenance pool. Uh, that typically provides us just with some smaller general maintenance projects across our campuses. Uh, those funds have allowed us to do, um, many things, um, including, um, some security work at K S B. Uh, we've done some lighting and sidewalk repair at K S B, and we've also done some campus, uh, I'm sorry, some cottage repair at F F A. So the next slide is going to show you, this is the new security vestibule at K S B. Uh, this has, um, been completed and requires a visitor, um, to actually identify themselves to the K S B staff, uh, to gain entry to the building. So that gives us an extra layer of safety and security for our staff and students, and it looks really, really nice. Teachers really don't do it justice. They did a great job. Uh, the next photo is going to show you some of the work we've done at F F A. Our cottages were last renovated in nineteen, in the nineteen fifties. So, um, we've been working really hard to get those brought up to, uh, modern standards for our campus and folks that stay there. So we, uh, we do have some money in our current biennial to do major renovations, but our maintenance pool has allowed us to do some general repairs to our cottages. So they're, I'm anxious for, for people to be able to visit, because it really does look nice.
Hey Karen, if I could interrupt for just a minute, um, just to say, the great work that's going on on all these campuses desperately needed to defer maintenance over a number of years, which our school districts, of course, understand that very well as, as well. I, I really want to acknowledge the efforts of a small but mighty group of people that really manage and help implement our capital construction project. Karen's part of that team. Um, we have a project manager, and we have staff at both of the schools. They work really, really hard, and because we did have this opportunity with lots of support financially from the General Assembly, they have been boots on the ground every day, just to project sports. So I just want to acknowledge them for a minute and say, what a great job that they're doing on both the cap with all the students and staff.
So lots of great progress being made, but as we discussed, facilities constantly need, um, renovation, they need improvement, and they, we need to work towards maintaining what we've been able to accomplish. So that is our goal. Um, so, uh, several offices, staff from several offices were together, uh, to work on the six-year plan, uh, from the Office of Finance and Operations, uh, from the Office of Special Education, uh, we're learning, and from the Office of Career Technical Education. Uh, we've had multiple discussions about moving forward. What do our projects look like? What does our need look like? Um, so, uh, the, the projects that we would like to propose are listed on the chart here in front of you, and I'll just kind of touch on each of those very, very briefly. Uh, the first project we'd like to put forward is the K S B, uh, McDaniel Scotten Building. Uh, this building is our main hub for instruction at K S B. Uh, this building, uh, was built in nineteen eighty-five, and it includes classrooms. Uh, there's this speech, uh, and hearing lab. There's a library, uh, various administrative offices, and some meeting spaces there in the building. And some of the repairs and upgrades that are needed are, uh, electrical. We have some upgrades that we need to do to our power alarm suppression system. Um, there's some exterior doors and windows that need to be replaced. And because of all of these things, because it's our main facility for our students where they spend most of their time, we felt like this should be a, a dedicated project, um, in our six-year plan moving forward. Uh, we also have requested several pools that you'll see, um, on the chart. Uh, there's a pool for electrical upgrades, uh, one for exterior maintenance, uh, again, a safety and security pool, and then our general maintenance pool. So funding in these pools will allow us to, uh, to use those accordingly across all three campuses, uh, to be able to support, um, the work addressed in each. Uh, lastly, we've got, uh, a couple of projects for our F F A Leadership Training Center. Uh, we did receive funds in this current biennial to do some cottage renovations, but it left several cottages that were not going to be covered, uh, in the funds we received. So we're, we're requesting those to finish that out. That'll make us a campus full of all renovated cottages at F F A. Uh, also, they have requested, um, some recreational outdoor areas. Uh, we are in construction for a new classroom and activity center that's funded in this biennial that we're super excited about. So they want to do some outside, outdoor classroom type situations around that center. Um, and also, we have some structures on campus that are no longer used, and so we would like to demolish those. So a project that includes funds for that. Uh, the last thing I wanted to mention was, um, additional funds are being requested for the SEEK calculation application. Um, our SEEK, uh, uh, application has been operational since two thousand and seven, and it has, uh, limited functionality. We did receive funds at this current biennial for revamping that application, um, but we would need a space to, uh, find some, are requesting those at this time. So those are the projects we would like to put forward in our six-year plan. Um, so if we have any questions, we could get to that at the end, and I'll just keep rolling, if that's okay.
I just have one question on the chart. Um, just quickly, when you, uh, identify a pool, do you guys then have discretion on that three point one million in the maintenance pool to choose projects out of the bucket?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
We prioritize accordingly.
Okay.
Yes. So moving on to the second part of our presentation today, we're going to talk about, like Robin said, additional budget requests. So you'll hear us use A B Rs a lot. We'll say A B Rs. That's an additional budget request, and that is the mechanism that an agency has through the biennial budget request process to ask for funds over their baseline budget. So, uh, they can be, uh, they can be growth, um, request. So if you have a current project or program that you're doing that you need additional funds for, uh, we can ask for those as an A B R. It can be a brand-new initiative that requires funding, um, or it can be, um, fund replacement. So you are losing a fund source, a federal fund source or restricted fund source, and you would like to ask for general fund dollars to replace those. But we have several mechanisms for us to ask for additional funds. Um, for the A B Rs that you're going to see this afternoon, uh, we did not include any dollar amounts, because what we would like to do is we'd like to invite you all to, um, think about what we need, instead of going back to that, let's restore to a previous fund level. Let's think about what we really need to accomplish to those that we have moving forward, instead of just restoring that fund. So I'll turn it back to Robin.
Okay, and I'm going to look back here and find one of my colleagues, David, if you'll come up and join us, please. So our first quote, repeat A B R, um, and David Couch is joining us at the table as sort of our invitation, have our vet, our business experts at the table to give you a little more deeper dive into each one of our repeat A B Rs for today. Um, David's A B R is for CATS to increase CATS offers of assistance and all that goes along with it. And we've allotted some time for David to kind of share with you his thoughts. Of course, um, and, and to echo what Karen said, you know, we can always talk about restoring certain fund levels. CATS, of course, has funding, but I think David will be able to share with us the things that have happened, especially during the pandemic years, and increased needs and uses of our technology and support staff to, to help with that. Um, so we really need to identify what our need is. So David's going to help us, um, kind of learn a little bit more about that. David, I'll turn it over to you.
Well, thank you. I appreciate this opportunity, and I do want to circle back earlier. Thanks you for recognizing our, our good education technology folks, uh, Kentucky School of Deaf and Blind, but also across the state during the pandemic, just really, truly for growing things. And, and also thank you for your kind words, uh, of me for the past thirty years. I greatly appreciate. It gives me a good run and go for today, doesn't it?
Yeah. Good timing.
The, uh, the staff that we put together, I can cover a couple of items in there, but also spend some time on specific ones. And I think we're all recognized a large influx of funds that happened, federal funds, one time during the pandemic. Now, some of those are pretty good. We've been trying to do certain things for, you know, three decades, and it expedited that. Uh, we got to a one-to-one ratio instead of, students had to rotate to specialized lab every, every classroom became a lab, because every student, you know, had a one-to-one ratio. We had digital learning coaches, something we've really tried, you know, and Randy, in your day, called those technology and the races specialists. Now they're digital learning coaches. And so that, that exploded on the scene to show teachers how to maximize, uh, tech, technology in their instruction. So there's a good that came from that. And as I presented in August, we had more money than ever, my thirty years, to go toward technology, over, you know, half a billion dollars. That's wonderful. That's great news. But as I talked about in August, a large portion of that starts going away in twenty-three and twenty-four. And so how do we operate beyond that? Because there are some new services we've put in place that were very valuable, seemed very valuable to our, to our students, to our teachers, and to our administrative staff within the school districts. Showed you a chart within the staff note that shows you over a seven-year period of what the funding has been. And once again, when, you know, Randy talked about it, is, and then maybe it was Dr. Todd about this really being like a Fortune one hundred organization, size and scale of what we do is definitely there. So these dollar amounts are big, but when you take a look at before the pandemic, we were about a hundred million shorter we needed per year to operate, you know, two hundred sixty-six million, two hundred thirty-five million, and then the pandemic brought in hundreds of millions. But we're getting ready to go back to that with a lot of new sources and resources being put in place. The internet, for sure, exploded in the amount of use. It's always a viable tool, and, uh, you've not heard me say this before. I'll say it again. Kentucky was the first state to have internet access, uh, to all of its schools and all of its districts, well worth mentioning, back in the nineteen nineties. And we've seen an increase in demand of that. But also, I think we've been pretty good stewards of taxpayer funds for three decades, pretty frugal. It is very difficult for me, as Robin knows, to ask for more money. It's not something that I do naturally. Um, so it's, it's gotten to a bad situation for me to actually come and say, we're reaching a really critical point. If we want to keep the momentum going of being, you know, a, a pioneer, national leader, education, technology, we have to start making investments to do that, because if we don't, we're going to start tumbling back down to the very bottom very, very quickly. It doesn't take long, uh, to do that. So you've seen the, the, those, those notes over, over time, or a period of, of years. The other thing I noticed is there's a commonality. Whenever the Board of Education makes it one of their top five priorities, it tends to get funded. Definitely one, two, or three. So you're going to hear me say, we need to make this one of your one, two, or three priorities. Because I take a look at that formula, when I take a look, and I'm happy for career tech education and transportation and kindergarten and K S D and K S B getting new funding, I'm really, they needed it. But it, but we need it as well. Uh, and I don't want that to drop off the radar, radar screen of, of the need that we have, uh, going forth in the future. The infographic I give you gives it pretty good. We tried to let folks show the difference this investment is making to students and teachers and staff across the state. So I hope you've taken a look at our twenty twenty-three that we just released in January, uh, infographic. We also, you know, good, good portion of that in our Kentucky teacher. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time going through that, but I can tell you there's two big sources that we use the funds for. One is the shared services we provide to all school districts across the state. Uh, really gives Kentucky the advantage over the other forty-nine states. I see what my peers do in the other forty-nine states, and it's something quite special that we do and beneficial for our school districts. The other one is what Robin mentioned, the offers of assistance. This is also unique in the United States to where we give money to districts, and they're required to match it equally. Now, when you add into that something called the federal E-Rate rebate program, is we get ninety percent back. So we spend, get ninety percent back. We send that to school districts. They match it. They can also apply for E-Rate. It's the best investment we have in, in state government. You get a three to four one bang for the buck with that kind of investment that we have, because of the way we set up, we're a maximizer of federal E-Rate rebate funds, and also because of what was set up back in early nineties as far as having to match an, an offer of assistance. I highlighted some of the areas that, 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 that are needed. And as Robin mentioned, some of this is restoring, uh, because the other thing that's happened to us, uh, I mean, as, as my mom always says, no good deed goes unpunished. We keep on doing stuff despite budget cuts, and we've reached a point to where we pulled all the rabbits out of the hat. So, you know, the, we started out in nineteen ninety-two with nineteen point five million dollars per year. Typically, there's a cost of living, which since nineteen ninety-two, we've got zero cost of living increase, and also it's been cut. Uh, it's been cut pretty substantially, you know, we're down to fifteen point four million dollars per year. And think about the scale and growth that we've had over my three decades, and to see it not grow with the cost of living, but actually see it be cut. But we've also seen the services being added on, on there. I, I think of one during the pandemic, a real simple one, online registration, because folks did, we did not want them to come physically in the buildings for a period of time, is they understood, wow, online registration, that saves me all this time, the day of school, and those that have been superintendents and principals and teachers know that, that know the turmoil that is in the early days. Well, that's all avoided early on, for the most part, with Well, that's all avoided early on, for the most part, with online registration. Definitely a service that we would like to see. Man, else you're familiar with this is before the cuts had happened, we used to do the Kentucky Virtual Library in a partnership with, with, with Post-Secretary Education. Well, during the budget cuts, we had to pick the best of the bad options, and that was it. And these provide instructional materials for, for students and teachers and publications, but we had to make that cut. Now, I always said, and I told, you know, the Post-Secretary Education is the Council of Secretaries. If we ever got sung again, we would reinstitute that, which we did during the pandemic. But that's a service that is getting ready to be, you know, ratted back down again. I think about the one-to-one services that we have in place and what that has meant for students and teachers. Well, we also have that problem going forward. We also expanded our internet services, which you would expect. Without increased funding, that starts ratcheting back down to a slower speed, which no one, you know, will enjoy. And actually, they'll push back on pretty, pretty strongly. So the first three chunks that you see here is part of it is we need to restore the funding, but also there's additional services that we need to address. And also, to be honest with you, and there's certain services we funded for close to two decades. It's not a good way to fund. If in a campus, the way we funded is not a good way to fund. We take that out of E-Rate rebates, normally move a certain portion of that to districts. The only thing that we hold back, because when the legislature funded that in 2006, they didn't find the ongoing costs. You have ongoing costs to all this stuff. It was zero. So we had to take it out. So it's kind of like making your house payment counting on your tax returns. That's not a good format, so that's what we're doing. The E-Rate rebates, we don't know when they come in. So part of this is strengthening out the finances for a long period of time. That need to be done, done in the right way, and that benefits districts as well. We also, which you may not realize, is we have a big role in computer science and in getting marketable degrees. And that was also cut during this time. These are just not, these are things they can go out immediately and make a difference with and get the attention of anyone that they want to work with. Well, during the budget cuts, this was also an area that you had to come back on. And we worked, you know, with career technical education and that endeavor. The third part is a big one, and it's a part that, having been involved with this for 30 years here, and then also in technology in my time in the U.S. Army, is a part that's a blind spot for most folks. They understand building systems, but you've got to have the talent to run them. It, this requires such precision to make it operate. And folks know if your, your, if lights go out for a period of time, there's people fussing about it. If there's heating and air conditioning going to go down, if the internet goes down for a period of time, there's people fussing about it. So there's people behind the scenes that are making that happen. So these are services that, behind the scenes, that make it operational. But also, we provide a lot of instructional technology types of services that students and teachers see daily. Administrative services, these are the kind of things with the financial management system called MUNIS that our offices work very closely together on. Every type of communication system is out there, basic that counts on technology is there. But also, we get involved with everything that touches the heating and air conditioning systems because of digitized, student safety systems in school buildings, so it's expanded beyond that. But what has not expanded is the amount of people it takes to run those. We have seen a great expansion of digital learning coaches, which has been awesome during, during this. And if you've not met any of those folks, they're working, they're, they are, they are changers. They are game changers in a school building as far as this investment making a difference and also helping folks that are struggling a bit with new technology. Our library media specialists also kind of play that role, to be honest with you, as digital learning coaches, very, very valuable in that case. So we have seen an expansion of that. But our concern is as this money starts contracting down, the federal money, and those positions start disappearing. I'm concerned about that. We also didn't see the expansion of technical positions. And these are the people behind the scenes that make this stuff work. This should have grown tremendously as well, but it did not. So my concern is, all these things that we have operational, how long can we keep this up? And do those folks start leaving to other industries because of just being overwhelmed in what they're doing? So I'll, I'll pause right there for any kind of questions that you have. And obviously, this is, this is another at bat, you know, for it. But typically, I talked about this for a couple of years until I guess the crisis moved. We are now crisis moved with this. If we don't address this in the, in this funding situation, we're going to start taking big steps backward very quickly.
Specific questions for David at this time? Dr. Todd?
How many technical people do you have serving the network?
A whole lot more. I was about to add. And part of it is too, Dr. Todd, is just the cybersecurity attacks have upped so tremendously. And as you've heard about me talking about, for if not, is education is the number one target of cyber attackers by far of any other industry. And so it's caused some of the people who are just trying to keep operating now to try to defend it more than they ever have before. I, I would say we are 40 to 50% understaffed in those areas. They're working tremendously long hours after we're not getting paid for it. I'd say district level and at the state level as well, as when we're trying to do that, just trying to keep all this stuff up and operational. So it's out of the goodness of the heart, a lot of these people are, are doing the type of things that they're doing. I will. I can give to you.
Yeah, I think as with all the ABRs that you're going to hear about today, we purposely not costed that out yet for our initial discussion. So we'll work with David as we go back and start preparing the actual penny of dollars with the request. And as the, as offices do that, they give us that level of detail. How many people do they need, how much second cost, down to travel and everything else. So we'll continue to cost this out. I think today's presentation is to bring to the board's attention sort of where we are with technology and what that looks like. David is correct. We had to go through some painful cuts, and yet expectations for additional work and new and different work, growing and growing. I think we all learned a lot through the pandemic of the, of different needs that maybe weren't as urgent or weren't as voluminous as before. And quite frankly, we've really benefited. We've really benefited from the federal money that has come to us. So we don't want to have to take a step backwards. We would also start talking to legislative body. We've encouraged and thought about getting in front of interim committees this summer so that we can start educating the legislators about what's happening in the world of technology and our education.
I would say part of the ones, it's just not getting cost of living increases. There's parts of our staff that have been with me for decades that for 50 or 20 years didn't get a, didn't get a raise of any type. So what happened during the pandemic, we get everyone silver awards, which is great. But they're going, I did this heroic thing for two years. And so we did something to, to address their finances. But when you do that, it cuts something else, and we're hoping to have to stop doing that.
I wasn't looking for a dollar, remember? I was just trying, I know how hard these positions are to fill. There's a lot of competition between bodies out there, just whether it's even possible to get the time, whether you can find those people or not. It's very competitive.
Yeah, I would like to, you know, in 2019, when the pandemic started, if it wasn't for the robust system we had, we started learning within 72 hours when the governor called. And other states did, they took months off to be able to do what we're doing. But in addition to that, I, I would also, because not only the money you're putting in, but the money the districts are putting in for the match, doesn't, that doesn't even come close to what they're spending. I know that, you know, in 2019 or 2018, we took the 4% revenue just to do reoccurring costs that the match doesn't cover. That's a couple of million dollars a year to the district. So I think that state needs to realize not only that this funding is only a partial funding to what is really being incurred and, and what this we split out. And I don't know if Master Plan in and of itself gives you that information anymore like it used to, but.
And so that, that half a billion includes district funding as well that we have. So that's totally inclusive. And I perhaps, I would say, have the best hand on that than the other states. Because we truly see every funding source is going into it. We also recognize this tremendous prophecy may happen in district funds and our funds to keep it sustained and go beyond.
Because it, it seems like with the legislature, they keep pushing everything to the local level. Well, the local level is already doing their part too. It's for them to pick up, you know, their part, you know, too.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Next repeat.
Our next repeat ABRs, I think Mickey Ray, our chief academic officer, is online with us. And Mickey has several repeat ABRs that she's going to walk us through, including PD, textbooks, instructional resources, content standards, and Read to Succeed. Mickey, are you online with us?
I am. Thank you so much, Robin. Are you all able to hear me okay this morning? Wonderful. So the first two members of the board, you will recognize you have brought up the funding needs for both of these categories multiple times over the course of the past meeting. So the first one for professional development, the requested funds are needed to assist districts in providing high-quality professional learning to support educators around those vibrant student experiences that we are so desperately seeking for students across our state, as well as grade-level learning, to support those deeper learning experiences. The Flexible Focus Fund was created by the legislature in 2003, 2004, but that was unfunded in the current biennial budget. So we are requesting funding to restore that amount plus additional needs that the board may see within this particular area to provide local districts with the funding for professional development for educators across their full systems. So that, that is the first one. The second one is related, so it is connected to instructional resources. Traditionally, we thought about that very narrowly in the scope of textbooks, but we're wanting to broaden that notion around high-quality instructional resources. And so similarly, this would be funding for local districts to make an investment in instructional resources that would promote the application and transference of that knowledge that we are wanting them to be able to apply, not only across grade levels, but across the disciplines. And so this would be something that has been unfunded for, for several years. And we, again, are seeking additional funding to support local districts and, and having honestly the purchasing power to select high-quality instructional resources. So those are the first two. The next one connected to content standards. So KRS 158.6453 is the statute that dictates the standards review process. And, and it is an unfunded mandate, but it is, there are certainly associated costs of that process. And moving into 2025 and beyond, our six-year cycle starts over. So we will have, the KDE will be charged with facilitating the process for reading and writing, mathematics, health and physical education standards, social study standards. And for each of those, we are required by law to have a third-party vendor who oversees the survey component, facilitates the process. And then also, that would be the cost associated with bringing in and working with the, the teachers who are on the advisory panels and review committee. So there is an associated cost, both with just the process, but also the KDE is required to provide professional learning that's connected to that standards implementation once the standards have been reviewed. And so both of those pieces would be covered under this particular additional budget request. And then lastly, you're very familiar with, with the Read to Succeed Fund. This is taking our early literacy initiative, and specifically, it's KRS 158.806 is the Read to Succeed Fund. And this fund is meant to support our statewide teacher academies. It's professional learning, reading selections that are made and provided at no cost to teachers and districts across the state, as well as our coaching model that is currently being shaped. And so we are looking to bring on our Assistant Director of Early Literacy, who will work very closely with Kristi Biggerstaff. We are looking to have regional literacy coaching directors who provide support to the school-based coaches who will be placed in elementary schools with, with greatest need. And so that is all taking shape and is to be implemented in '24, '25. So as we get closer to that, we need that funding basis for sustainability of that program, but also just initially to hire those coaching positions. So that is all I have. Happy to address any questions related to those four budget requests.
Thank you, Mickey. I do have one about PD and textbooks. I think it's more Robin and Karen. Flexible Focus also includes interpersonal safety, preschool, and ESS. So by specifically singling out ABRs for PD and textbooks, our request would be that funding for Flexible Focus be restored with additional earmarks for PD and textbooks. Districts can then use those Flexible Focus funds with the same flexibility they always had, but.
Yeah, that's correct. They're, they're each listed as an individual line item in our budget. So while they are in the Flexible Focus pot and they can be moved around, in the budget bill, it actually lists them separately. So PD and textbooks have been removed and do not receive any funding, but ESS, preschool, and safe schools have continued to receive funding.
Just one I need to know.
I have a question. I think that PD was removed, removed for some reason, and what's the logic of being able to get it back?
Is it the logic of being able to get it back in?
What's the likelihood of it is removed?
You know, Dr. Todd, that's a wonderful question. I don't know that I can ever have the crystal ball that would allow me to know what the chances are for any of our budget requests. I know I was before you last time, and wringing my hands and going, I don't, I don't think we'll get anything. And then we did really, really well. I think it's a product of the circumstances of the funding that is available. And I think it is how good of a job do we do in basically impressing upon the General Assembly that professional development is something needed and desired and craved in our local school districts. So I think part of it is salesmanship and part of it is funding that is available. So. Yeah, it just seems like common sense.
No, I'm glad you punctuated the conversation, Lee, because our schools and districts are really struggling with professional learning. They see how important it is, but they also are hamstrung with not being able to release teachers. There aren't enough substitute teachers to make it work safely and academically. And so I would say this is top of mind for school and district leaders. And really, one of those problems that we've got to get control of if we're going to be successful with all of the big ideas that we have moving forward.
That's the thing. You're not going to make us transition to thinking about doing without.
Without the retooling.
It's got to be done, so. Good luck.
Godspeed, Robin.
All right, roll on. The last ABRs that we're going to share with you today, again, will be familiar to many of you. We're going to talk about things that are out of my office in the Office Finance operation, Seek Base. We know that the base per people guarantee for our students is the most flexible way by increasing that amount, the most flexible way to give districts funds that they need to do all kinds of things that they need to. We talked about professional development. So if we increase that per people amount, that gives districts the flexibility to use that for professional development if they so desire, or all kinds of other things that they need. So it allows the district to have that flexibility and respond to their unique needs. So one of the things it, it has been talked about is Seek, like other things, like David mentioned, hasn't really kept up with the cost of living. So we've not really had any inflationary adjustments. The General Assembly has increased base fee. And for the current year, we're at $4,200 per, per people, that guaranteed amount. But it really hasn't kept up with the inflationary cost of just the society as a whole. So we, we are looking and seeking for your thoughts as we move through this budgetary process of how we should cost out, what is the appropriate per people amount? What is the amount that really is adequate for our schools to be able to take care of those students in their care? So you'll see us developing some models. We will run it based upon an inflationary factor. But if there are other ways that you'd like us to run those numbers for you, we are very open to do that. The next one is Seek People Transportation. We have this one in front of you all the time. It is a recurring request. It is somewhat similar to what Dr. Poe was talking about. Is districts more and more are taking up or really a greater share of their own money in order to provide that transportation level. So this year, I think we're about 68% funding from the state to assist our local school districts. And so we will be bringing back to you for consideration sort of that, what do we need to really get it up to full funding for our local school districts? So we'll be crunching those numbers for you. And then lastly, the education finance application that Karen talked about a little bit early, earlier. Karen talked about it from the capital side. We are in the process of getting ready to put out a competitive solicitation on the street with, which will help us engage an external partner to revamp our SEEK system. This will allow us more flexibility as we think of other ways that maybe are. This will allow us more flexibility as we think of other ways that maybe our state portions should be looked at or modeled. It'll allow us to have more historical data. It'll let us kind of move triggers and see what happens with them. All of our current system doesn't allow us to do that. So we've got some really smart people in my office that do those things manually when somebody says, well, what if we did this? And those folks back there are the ones that are, you know, saying, well, this is what happens. So we want to develop a more robust system that'll allow us to do that more efficiently and automated. We did receive funding in the last session. We have about $2.5 million. This part in the repeat ABR would be that ongoing maintenance that would be required. So we'll have more information once that solicitation closes, we see what the contract might look like, and then we'll be able to come back to you with those amounts as we move forward. So those are three that you've heard from, from my office frequently, I think, and we'll be costing those out for you. I'm going to turn it over now to, let me see if there are any questions first on any of those three items. These are ones that we've heard before, I'm sure. Okay. So Karen, I'm going to turn it back over to you for our next steps.
Okay. So we've shared a lot of information with you guys today, so let's talk about the next steps. So for your April KDE meeting, we're going to do a really brief overview of our baseline budget and also talk a little bit about defined calculations and what those are, and then also introduce some more ABRs to you for your review and discussion. So we're really looking forward to your input as we build this budget request so that we can work towards supporting, you know, the vision, those three big buckets, you know, the vibrant experiences and encouraging innovation and collaborating with our community. So we look forward for that, for that discussion so that we can build our request to support the mission. So, thank you, and we'll take any questions that you may have.
Yeah, if I can kind of close this here real quickly, if we have any remaining time, looking at marriage, if we have any remaining time. Okay. And as I listened to your all the discussion this morning, I heard lots of topics that I've heard dollar sign. And knowing that United We Learn, as you continue those important discussions, what I've asked for the program staff that are working with the United We Learn project, as they listen to discussions within those work groups, to make sure they're capturing those things that might require financial support. The timing is always what's so challenging, because all these discussions are going on, but we have a timeline in order for us to meet that biennial budget request that's going to accumulate in October. And so it's really important that as we're listening and thinking about all these things, that we stay on that timeline and have something prepared, because if not, we lose a valuable window of opportunity. And that opportunity is going to the General Assembly and asking for funds to support the doing of the work, not just the planning of the work, but the doing of the work. If we miss out on that, it could be two more years before we get to come back to the General Assembly and ask for funds. So I would encourage us, as all these very important discussions are going on, if you can work through the chair or the co-chair to make sure that Karen and I are staying on top with you. We have lots of people listening across the department and reporting back to us through the respective offices. And then as we listen to your continuing discussions, like you had this morning, about the big ideas and then narrowing those to what is the priorities of this board, we'll be in the background trying to kind of cost those out for you. I think, I think as we end, if you have ideas right now today, I know earlier you did an exercise where you had time to think out loud with everybody listening. So if you have ideas right now that you'd like to convey to Karen and I so that we can start working on things, we're happy to do that.
Well, I think it's, I thank you for this and this item on the agenda at this time, because, you know, I mean, the reality is resources are finite and our ambitions know no limits. So as we are, we've started, we've initiated some important activities. We have stepped off into really implementing a reality around the equity revolution that Jason was greeted with, he said in his assignment. And we're really proud of those accomplishments. So I think I'm wondering now, are, how do we evolve into what we want to be going for structurally, financially, accountability-wise and so forth? So that, you know, we use our discretionary or philanthropic funds or whatever, how do we evolve as an organization and meet, become what we want to be and not have to revert to what we were just because of mandates that and the funds ended?
Yeah, I'm simple on saying, I just want to, how do we get, and you say this process is a good way to set out priorities, so.
All right, that's a difficult question to answer. I think, to be honest, the volume of federal, flexible federal support that we are receiving, there's no way that we're not able to feel that goes away. That's true here, it's true in schools across the state too. And given the climate right now around education and funding, I'm not optimistic. They will have regular support to figure out how to keep going. So we rely on resources that we have. We will have to rely on federal grant opportunities. We have to rely on the support of philanthropy, but we will find a way to keep things moving, which is what we have done and will continue to do. So help is probably not only a way, because we have to go through that completely.
On that uplifting note, I would really appreciate the commissioner's comment that what we're experiencing now at the board and department level is completely analogous to what schools and districts are facing as we look at this funding cliff that folks continue to refer to. The dilemma is, the struggle is real in that we had access to unusual sums of money to do good work, and schools and districts and the agency are doing that good work with the funds that we have available, but we know that those funds are going to be going away. So I think that having this conversation early and extending it over a period of time will allow us to make the wisest decisions we can in light of those looming realities that we are going to all be facing. And I think we do it with a spirit of optimism and with clarity around our expectations. And if you, as you lead us through the evolution that Dr. Robinson was talking about of these funding priorities and these requests, then I think that just better prepares us to be good advocates for the kind of funding that will be most needed in our schools and districts and at the agency moving forward. It is going to be a difficult, there will be turbulence as we move forward over the next few years.
We, I think, just based on the conversations that have been happening the past few weeks and then yesterday, there is some interest with the legislature and perhaps for the next session when the full budget is up, around supports for the teaching profession. And they need to do that through SEEK, because the total compensation package is as part of how schools fund that. Legislature may have an opportunity to do that. Whether or not they can stay focused on that or other cultural issues is a question to be determined. We'll see what happens with that. The other thing that has some real possibility of getting attention is the Katz conversation that David had, because oftentimes it's motivating for funders or legislators to talk, I mean, fear it could be motivated. And when you start talking about turning off systems that are real vital, that's where we are. And so we have some tangible ways that are going to happen if there's not an increased rate in these lines. So we can clearly say, here's what this is, here's what's going to happen. And then if they choose not to, we need to let the chips fall and experience that.
All right, thank you. We will see you again in April.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. And don't neglect to heed Robin's offer to engage with her now, with ideas, with all of us. Feel free to send those to me and copy Sharon and Jason, and we will make sure that they're starting to do the math on any ideas that begin to bubble up from you individually as you marinate over what we've talked about today. And as you know, we always provide time on our board agendas for dedicated public comment. We have not received any public comment requests for today's meeting, so we will move on to the presentation of the 2022 Kevin C. Brown Strategic Priority Award. Dr. Glass?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Kevin C. Brown served at KDE in various roles from 2004 to 2019, most recently. Mr. Brown served as the interim Commissioner of Education from December 2019 through September 11.
The man, the national legend.
That's it here.
I thought so.
Brown's time at the Department through 2020 was marked with significant challenges that called for strategic educational leadership and clear ongoing communications that was forward-thinking, action-oriented, and aimed at advancing efforts to educate, feed, and support Kentucky's 650,000 students during the global pandemic. The priority area for this award changes from year to year based on the desire of the board. This year's priority award area is United We Learn. United We Learn forces our vision for the future of education in Kentucky, built around three big ideas, creating more vibrant learning experiences for every student, encouraging innovation in our schools, especially when it comes to assessment and accountability, and creating a bold and future for Kentucky schools through collaboration with our communities. These three big ideas, students, innovation, and community, form the vision for the future of public education in Kentucky that was informed by Kentuckians. United We Learn means everyone in the Commonwealth, educators, families, students, community members, visitors, working together to support our public schools, to bring about deep, authentic learning experiences for all our students. The 2022 award seeks to recognize a person, group, organization, district, school, or post-secondary institution who, through policy and practice, makes it a top priority to champion United We Learn. The criteria for the award include significant contributions or other efforts to champion United We Learn and support the reimagining of learning in Kentucky by co-creating a vision with communities, fostering local innovation, and advancing policy recommendations aligned with this work. At this time, it is my honor to announce the 2022 Kevin C. Brown Strategic Priority Award winner, Ms. Audrey Gilbert. I can sit right there. I have a ton of things to say about you, and we've heard from you earlier, but the recognition. Yes, Audrey was nominated by two individuals about her outstanding contributions. The first of those was another student. Her first nominator said, "There are very few high school peers that I look towards and know will change the world." Audrey Gilbert is undoubtedly one of them. She never ceases to amaze me in her commitment to Kentucky education and the success of the next generation of the Commonwealth. Audrey's role at KDE sets her apart not only from her peers, but also the educational innovation community as a whole. She gives up her time without monetary compensation to bring a much-needed youth perspective and agency to United We Learn and KDE's work. Audrey's work in state government is complemented by her commitment to building a community of stakeholders through the Kentucky Student Voice Team. At this organization, she directs research, including school climate audits, to evaluate how Kentucky students feel at school and what actions may improve their experience. This work ensures that no student is left out of ongoing educational innovation work while building a community of co-creation-minded communities perfectly aligned with the mission of United We Learn. In all facets of her academic and extracurricular life, Audrey embodies what it means to be a leader in education. And our second nominator had this to say. Audrey has a true hunger for knowledge and always seeks to understand the historical and societal influences that have shaped past policy before advocating for changes to future policy. Through her internship experience, Audrey is living the United We Learn vision. She has engaged deeply in rich learning experiences that allow her to deploy her existing skills while simultaneously working to develop new skills. Through this model, Audrey is showing KDE staff what the learning is all about, has inspired staff to innovate in new ways. And we have the award namesake, the Mr. Kevin Brown, here. Kevin, I wonder if you could also come up and say a few words about this award and Audrey. We have Audrey here with us, and we also have Dr. Patrick Courtney here, who is also one of the nominators for Audrey. Come up and please say a few words. So, Mr. Brown?
Yes, thank you. Audrey, I was here at the department years ago, and I believe it was under Dr. Holliday, others correcting if that's not correct, and was first started in the Student Advisory Council. I think around the same time, Pritchard Community started Student Voice Team. We didn't always truly honor student voice. That was in its infancy, and I think we, as adults, are sometimes a little apprehensive about student engagement, and now it is nice to finally see a plan come together. You're now the face of student engagement in Kentucky. I struggled to try to find some words to say because of just your talents, and I can remember tuning into the United We Learn council meeting, one of the first ones, and I didn't know about you or anything, and I was like, who is this person? And you're so excited. So exciting to see you and to see students really being honored and valued and contributing to the future state of education. The best way to honor you is your own words, because it's hard if my words will not do you justice. I wanted to repeat a quote that was a Kentucky teacher from you, and this is talking about your work on the council. "The council represents a future full of potential for all students, a future where students are seen as more than a test score, and school is somewhere people want to be." This new era of Kentucky education means that students, educators, families, and community members are invited to the table to engage in meaningful conversations where everyone is valued. I am grateful for the intentionally inclusive and collaborative work that this council will do. I mean, that says it all right there, and those are her words. You are the face of a new era of Kentucky education at a time when, unfortunately, public education is under attack. So thank you and all your student colleagues for what you do. Now, I was told that this was a surprise, and it was embargoed, and I tried to honor embargoes, but also due to my client, Jefferson County Public School. So I did talk to our HR department about you yesterday. We'll continue to contact you.
Yay. And Dr. Courtney?
Well, good morning again, everyone. It's really important to be here to talk on behalf of Audrey, who of course needs no introduction to this board. When the call came out for nominations about United We Learn and the future of education, well, I mean, there it is. Audrey is certainly going to go on to be an amazing classroom teacher, an amazing education leader, a policymaker, a commissioner, a secretary of education. Some things you might not know is that Audrey is with us every day here at the department in the office of continuous improvement and support in her role as an intern. So she's certainly involved in the United We Learn work day-to-day, but she's also digging in really deep on the work of the agency and learning about how we manage policy in OCIS, about how we prepare for a board meeting, how we interact with the legislature. And she's taking the skills that she already has as a remarkable student advocate and seeing how that translates and will translate for her in future roles. So we're really proud to get to work with her every day. I will also say that she's taught us within OCIS a lot about the roles of student voice, but also about the roles of internships. We don't get to work a lot with that. We're mostly federal programs, but our colleagues across the hall who get to work more with internships have been, obviously, talked about this for many years, but for us, getting to really experience firsthand the way that we have scaffolded policy work and that information for her, getting to see her apply that knowledge in real time, has been really formative for us as an agency and as a staff as well. So I will pay to our beloved friends in Jefferson County, get in line, our number, and we'll be back to you soon.
I'm going to give you a chance to speak to you, but I just have to say, I've never seen Kevin Brown need a quote. Usually, yes, Joe, but now we've got quotes from
the past two years when I interned under Dr. Brewer and with Stacy. And just watching you all from your various backgrounds has inspired me to see where you all have come from, some of you being teachers, administrators, or a student member or a teacher member. Just the commitment to education over your lifetime is amazing. As a student now, I appreciate that because I know that people don't just get out of the classroom and they're done. They don't forget about us. We're always at the front of their minds. We're always the ones that we're thinking about. And as a future educator, I'm also thankful that you are continuing to advocate for our profession and welcoming people like me in. I want to say thank you to Matthew and to Arnoff, my bestie from GSP, for nominating me. This is not something that I expected necessarily because I've seen these awards given a lot. I've seen them, I've walked up there and given Dr. Glass the awards several times last year before we did the presentation. So it wasn't something that I expected to get necessarily, but I am honored. And I do want to thank my whole family is here. They're not on a day off of school, like they're not skipping. It is a day off for us. No, no, we're still good there. No residency letters for us. I know, it should be a federal. But today, they're going in later to do profile of a graduate presentation, which is really where my interest in this work got started, specifically with deeper learning with United We Learn. I was able to be a pilot, be a guinea pig, like I like to say. For my school, we developed our presentations. I have given so many at this point. I always love a good skill defense, but I've given a lot of my own. I was the first student to do that at my school based on the profile of a graduate. I helped, I went in over the summer, which is not something that kids do often, but as a teacher's kid, I've always done that. So just seeing the growth of profile of a graduate, being able to serve on the subcommittee for the board for the profile of graduates over the course of the last few years and seeing where it's going to go when I'm a teacher is really exciting for me. So it's kind of full circle that they're doing their defenses today because I did them so many years ago, and then I'm here getting recognized for that award today. So thank you all.
Audrey, on behalf of the board and the Kentucky Department of Education, congratulations. We're so proud of you. We do have this lovely box of old Kentucky chocolates here for you. Dr. Rod has been in today. Got the lovely word.
Send her a little bit of coffee. Yeah, and then look for it. Yeah. Your family's, no, don't worry. We're all about nothing.
Everybody wants a picture of that.
Band?
Say one more with Matthew or Matthew for helping her.
Thank you. Okay. Congratulations again, Audrey. Make no mistake, I've said it before, we will all work for Audrey Gilbert one day. Just another milestone on that journey. I have a couple of closing announcements. Don't forget to pick up your gift bags from our CTE friends and partners. You got to hear a little bit about those yesterday. I still can't wait to see the octopus. Also, an announcement for board members, as well as those who may be viewing our meeting today, applications for student and teacher positions on the Kentucky Board of Education are open now until March the 6th, and you can find more information about that process on the KVE homepage. I love ending a meeting on a high note at this point. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Tremble, one, and a second from Dr. Poe. Thank you. All those in favor, please respond by saying aye. Thank you guys very much for our productive and highly informative meeting and enjoy the rest of our lunch. Audrey will want you to join us for lunch as well. Elizabeth's giving me the eating time back there. So the Gilberts, all of those here with us today, if you will join us for lunch.